Welcome to the July 7, 2020 Board of Commissioners. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas are located at the back of the chambers. The Commission now utilizes speaker request forms. If you'd like to speak on any item, please complete a speaker request form located in the bookshelves in the back of the chambers and return it to Commission Office Manager, and he's located on the lower right-hand side of the dials. First, we'll have a moment of silent reflection and pledge of allegiance led by Highway Assistant Superintendent Mark Shack. First, we'll have a review and approval of the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
By DeSanto, second by Drews. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next, we'll have consent calendar by Holly Hayes.
Good morning, Commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 16, 2020. Number six is to approve the renewal of the retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm license, farm and wine license for reptile gardens as presented, and to release the license upon payment of appropriate property taxes. Number seven is to authorize the Chair's signature to the Order of Organization and Incorporation for the Burgess Road District. Number eight is to acknowledge the resolution for a minor adjustment to road district boundaries of the Kiefer Ranch Road District. Number nine is to approve the purchase of a new laser projector and security camera as submitted by the Commission Office. Number 10 is to declare surplus for the purpose of sale or disposal, 1 Glock 19, serial number BCHV 839, as presented by the Sheriff's Office. And finally, number 11 is to declare surplus, the items left as presented at 725 North La Crosse Street, for the purpose of sale, donation, or disposal.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. At this time, are there any members of the public who wish to move any items from the consent agenda five through 11? If not, at this time, is there any Commissioners who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda for further discussion? If not, a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ross Connect, second by Drews. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next, regular agenda items 12 through 18. Number 12, we need a motion to table, please.
Motion to table.
Motion by Ross Connect.
Second.
Second by DeSanto. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 13, Ms. Cindy. Item A, Ms. Cindy, 13A.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. You guys have the resolution authorizing the execution of contractual documents with the state of South Dakota for the receipt of the CARES Act funds. And so, in order to apply for any of those funds that are available, we do have to have the resolution passed and also the agreement approved.
Thank you. Do we have a motion or a discussion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Drews, second by Lacroix. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item B, please.
And that is the actual reimbursement agreement. It's quite lengthy, and I think they're just covering all their bases with that one, as does Jay. I know Jay has reviewed it as well.
Thank you, Ms. Cindy and Jay, for reviewing this for our approval. Do we have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Drews.
Second.
Second by Lacroix. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item C.
A little ahead of schedule, because that is actually scheduled for 9:15, so if you table that until it's time.
Okay. Motion to table?
Table C to 9:15.
Table by, motion by Drews.
Second.
Second by Ross Connect. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Madam Chair, might be important to point out how much we are going to receive from that CARES fund.
7.5?
7,515,950 dollars.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner DeSanto. Next is items from the Sheriff.
Good morning. Brian Mueller, Chief Deputy Pennington County Sheriff's Office. And the request we're bringing before you today is a request to hire five additional correctional officers to open up another cell block in the jail in the next couple of months. As part of our original 10% cuts, we had 10 open correctional officer positions, and we have been able to, up until now, hold two cell blocks open to be able to maintain that. But dealing with the local marshal service, they're letting us know that due to the COVID, they had a lot of cases backed up, and they anticipate those cases kicking into full motion here later in July. This is going to add several different, several more US Marshals to the custody of Pennington County, which would require us to open up another cell block. So we would anticipate that the extra revenue that was generated by these increased numbers would more than pay for the cost of the additional staff. And if we are not able to add the additional staff, we'll have to ban that with overtime, which would be very expensive at this point.
Thank you. Any questions or motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Ron Ross Connect and Drews for the second. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
As Brian points out, with this additional need, we're looking at a great deal of overtime pay. And as we've been going through the budget, we've seen what overtime pay can do to the budget. So it makes sense to put these guys on and put them to work. And obviously, if it turns out that we're not making the money we thought we were going to, we can make other decisions at that point in time.
Absolutely. And through, you know, we do have enough turnover in the correctional officer positions to where if there's a change in that later in the year, we could just not backfill some other positions.
Right.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Lacroix.
I appreciate you guys looking through that, Brian, because I think also correctional officers doing a lot of overtime puts a lot of stress on them that they already have already. So I think this route is the more appropriate route to go as far as doctrine goes. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Let's go back to taking number 12 off the table. We have a motion. Pull it off the table.
So moved.
Second by Drews, second by DeSanto. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Jay?
Good morning. Jay Eldren with the State's Attorney's Office. The attorney for the applicant for the lien release request was here earlier, and I had an opportunity to visit with her. My understanding, real quick, is that they're in the process, her client owns the property through a treasurer's tax deed that was issued last August. At the time that treasurer's deed was issued, county liens were removed from that property. That's state statute. And that was the only reason she was here and asking for a lien release, but she doesn't have to do that, because that statute automatically released that lien. The only thing saved is federal, state, and city liens. So now those county liens, the recipient of the funding or assistance that gave rise to those county liens, those would still attach to any other property they own. But as to this specific property where the treasurer's deed was issued, the county liens are removed by law from those. So no need to do a release.
Okay, so no need for any motion or anything, just let it go, right?
Thanks for the explanation, Jay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jay. All right, so number 12 is disposed of. It's not 9:15 yet, so let's go on to Dustin Willett, wherever he may be. Now, let's go to number 16. We'll come back on 15. We don't have to table it, do we, Holly?
Probably should.
Yeah, we do. Move to table.
Move to table 15.
C.
By DeSanto. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ross Connect. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 16.
Good morning, Commissioner Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department. First up in front of you here is the notice of award for some federal aid bridge replacement that we, we applied for, thanks to Gary Drews for the heads up. He forwarded this to me back, when was it, March, probably, I think? Kind of shows our top three on that, on that list of the bridges that actually wouldn't otherwise apply or qualify for big funding, now that we qualify for big grants. These bridges would have, would not have qualified for that. But so, in essence, we put, put in an application for these three bridges, and we, we awarded federal aid grant funding in the amount of $1,273,299. Our match required to that is $280,451. So this is a very good thing for Pennington County. These bridges, we would have, I think the total cost of these replacements was about $1.6 million if we would have had to pay for the whole thing upfront or on our own. So the DOT is going to initiate the design and administer the project. These projects are set to be constructed in 2023, so with that, are there any questions?
No, I just think that's
Madam Chair.
pretty awesome that Gary brought that forward, and you guys followed through. So good job to both of you. Ron Ross Connect.
I find this one sentence pretty interesting, written by Dave. It says, several, several of you have inquired, so that I thought I would also pass along these 113 applications represented 11% of the current eligible need. Unfortunately, we only had federal funds to address 5%, and the big program can only address about 1% annually of the replacement need. So this need, this needs to continue to be a joint effort between the federal, state, and local, with the heaviest burden on the local county governments. But I thought, you know, for the number of applications, you must have put in some pretty good applicant, or pretty solid applications to get three projects approved.
Yeah.
Good work.
Our three bridges, with the modified big score, I think they scored in the top 10, those three, so they were, they were structurally deficient and posted, and they're ready for replacements.
Good job to your team, Joe. Item B, please.
Item B is a, this is just a resolution as directed by the Board at the, I believe, the July or, no, second meeting in June, to lower the speed limit on Lower Spring Creek from Old Folsom Road, approximately 1.2 miles going east to 40 miles an hour. We, we did call and worked with Scott Durkis on this to find the correct place to put that. So that's, this is simply the, the resolution making that.
I would move to approve to change the speed limit on Lower Spring Creek Road to 40 miles per hour from intersection of Old Folsom Road West for 1.2 miles.
Moved by DeSanto.
Second.
Second by Lacroix.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
I do think this is a very appropriate move on our part to do this. I recognize that this is probably not typical of what we do on most roads, but I think the road conditions, the visibility on that road, the curves on the road do justify moving this speed limit down to the 40.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Joe, do you know if they're going to go ahead and do anything with that approach?
They, we still plan to help them with that. Unfortunately, our manpower right now, being with the holidays, and we're actually down a couple people up in Hill City, so we're, we're helping out there. So we're, we're down on manpower, so as soon as we get caught up for, with our projects, we're going to definitely get out there and help them, so.
Well, thanks for your work on that.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
I, I agree with Mr. Drews and Ross Connect on this, and, you know, I really appreciate, Joe, you give me the insight and tell me to go out and look at stuff, and that resident kept calling me into where we finally got together and do that. But that's one good thing about this, this job is getting to go out and, and see these areas. And, and I have to agree, you know, the widening roads and stuff like that. I know it wasn't something the Highway Department supported at the beginning, but, you know, I guess that's, I think it was appropriate, and appreciate you guys' hard work that you guys do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good solution in the end.
Yes, it was.
All right. Do we do have a motion and a second? Or we have a motion? Who was the second?
Lacroix.
Lacroix, sorry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Next up is a modification to an agreement that was previously approved by you guys for the fencing on Fort, or on Sheridan Lake Road for the Forest Service. Due to some ADA requirements and their access forest, I don't remember exactly the terms that they used, but they were originally going to go, the fence was going to follow the right of way and then go down and fence around the picnic areas. But due to their ADA stuff and access requirements, they weren't able to do that. So now we're going to fence up to the driveway, and then they'll put a cattle guard in there so that any disabled people can drive across the cattle guard and still access the stream and the, the area, so.
Bottom line is, is it does, doesn't cost anything extra. Okay?
Move to approve.
Moved by Ross Connect.
Modification number one to the Forest Service Amendment.
Second.
Moved by Drews. Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Joe, just a second. We're going to let Cindy so she can, we're going to bring hers off the table, if that's okay, because it's past 9:15, then we'll bring you back forward. Ms. Cindy, do we have a motion to bring?
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to bring item C for the public hearing off the table.
Motion to bring 13C off the table by Drews.
Second.
Second by DeSanto. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Ms. Cindy?
Good morning again. We have the supplement to the General Fund John T. Vicarage budget in the amount of $60,106, and then also another supplement to Health and Human Services budget in the amount of $10,000. Both of these are from current year revenue.
Do you have a motion, please?
Move for approval.
Moved by Lacroix.
Second.
Second by Drews. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Cindy. Okay, Joe. Superintendent Joe Miller, Superintendent, sorry.
All right, where were we? Item D, Sunset Ranch Road District Maintenance Agreement. So this road district was actually, this agreement was put in place back in 2012. The individual or the road district approached Heidi several times, and they finally came to an agreement, and this agreement is what came out of that. It was supposed to be updated every year or when they annexed more property. Come to find out, they, they didn't hold up there under the agreement, but we did come to an agreement. They annexed across the road, and we had the State's Attorney review this agreement and put this agreement together for us. Updates the yearly amount from $5,788 to $7,275. They've now annexed more property, about 0.6 miles. Our average cost to maintain an asphalt road is about that $12,000 mark. So that's where that number comes from. And this is just to maintain that agreement. I guess with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Joe, is this, how's this different than the burnt fork? Where we're not going to get in involved with financially on burnt, that's a road district?
Correct.
So this is a road district that we're, we're funding to a certain point?
No, so 156 was put on to the system back in 2012 because of this agreement. The road district pays us to maintain that portion of the road.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have a motion or discussion?
Move for approval.
Moved by Lacroix, second by DeSanto. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item E.
Item E, Joint Powers Agreement. So this is an amendment to an agreement that was signed by the BOC for I-90 Service Road South, basically relinquishing the jurisdiction back to, I believe, the state. Basically, it's modifying the, the termini for East Mall Drive is going to terminate on to Seeger, I believe. I don't recall exactly. Bottom line is, since we're the original signatories on it, it doesn't affect anything that we do or anything for us, so they just need our signature on it.
Do we have a motion or discussion? Moved by Ross Connect.
Second.
Second by Drews. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Next up is authorization to advertise and let bids for one new truck per equipment purchase plan. Back in 2019, we put a equipment purchase plan back, or in, in place, and the Board voted on that and approved it. We've currently taken, so after we bought five trucks last year, we've now taken five trucks out of commission to do the cracked frames, no longer meet DOT compliance, so we're back to kind of where we started. We still have some ticking time bombs with the double, double wall frames. Don't know when those are going to crack and be taken out of service. The truck was not in our 10% cut, or it was within our, our budget with that 10% cut, so. Cost of the truck last year was 109,983, so.
Okay. Any discussion or motion, please?
I'd move to authorize and advertise let bids for the new truck.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Second by Lacroix. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item G.
Item G, all right. The thing everybody's been waiting for today. So as everybody probably knows, last week, on July 1st, Wednesday, we had a, a bridge deck partial failure on Nemo Road. This is the last bridge in Pennington County on Nemo Road if you're, if you're heading west. A truck, I believe it's BTC is, is the trucking company. They haul iron ore from the, an iron ore mine up on Nemo by Twin Peaks Ranch there to the cement plant. We don't know if the truck that went over this is, is overweight, but we assume it was not. We weighed a truck that was identical. You can see it in the bottom left-hand picture here. There's an identical truck here. They, they did weigh that one, and it was spot on for weight. So we only assumed that they were loaded the same. Due to the, I guess, the destruction of the truck that went over this, the axles and tires were blown, so we don't, there was no way to weigh it accurately, so we, we assumed that it wasn't overweight. Some timelines, we've reached out to Fertara. They're going to jump these bridge decks, so we need eight bridge decks total. We need three of the 50 footers, which is the span that collapsed. The one right next to this is bad, and then there's one on the other side of the, the bridge that's also bad. So there's three 50, yeah, three 50 footers, and then five 30-foot spans that are bad that need to be replaced. We had KLJ out there to look at it and just confirm that it does need to be stayed closed, and there was no way we could get at least one-way traffic. And they, they, after doing their detailed inspection, they still recommended keeping the bridge closed to, to traffic.
So Joe, what is, what is the timeline and the cost and the solution?
So the timeline for this, we're hopeful we can get the bridge decks manufactured and delivered here by the end of the month, probably first part of August. And then we already have a contractor that's out there doing work on four other bridges. They've agreed to also do, basically, we'll do a change order that will be coming to you guys to, to fix this bridge as well. Parts or the bridge deck units, about $40,000 to $50,000. And so the, the contract for the four other bridges was about $700,000 to do those four bridges. We haven't got that price from the contractor yet, but I would imagine that's going to come in between 150, 100 to 150,000 dollars.
To fix this bridge?
To fix this bridge.
And are we going to try to put one lane open in the meantime before August, or?
No. The bridge, or the bridge inspector recommended closure, so the, the difficulties with opening it to one lane, if you look, so this is looking, this would be looking south or on the eastbound lane on Nemo Roads. This bridge deck here is bad, and then you go over one more bridge deck. So these bridge decks are roughly three foot in width, and there's eight of them all right next to each other. And then you get, so you got two good bridge decks right here, and then the third, the next one over is bad. So there's no way to get traffic on that bridge safely.
Because it'd end up doing?
Correct. There's already on the, I don't think we got a picture of it. Oh, duh, 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 duh. I don't know how to rotate that. So this one right over here, you can't quite see it in this picture, but you can see the asphalt starting to buckle on this one, and it's the same, same one as this on the right-hand wheel track, and this one's already sunk about an inch and a half, two inches. So basically, we're left with two, possibly three, bridge decks to, to open up a lane of traffic, which then we have to have Jersey barriers out here to, to, I guess, guard this hole and keep people off of this, and we just don't want to put any more weight on that bridge than we have to. So unfortunately, it's just not in the cards to open it up to one lane.
We're, we're looking at, sorry, Commissioner Drews, we're looking at like August 1st, August, end of August?
I would say end of September, probably. I don't know exactly how long it's going to take to get the bridge decks taken apart and put back in. The contractor indicated he could get, they wouldn't be able to get started on it, probably the end of August, taking it apart, which then, once we get it apart and then put it back together, you're looking at a month, probably a month and a half, he said, when we talked to him yesterday, so.
Commissioner Drews.
Joe, from what I understood you to say is that we won't even have the materials here until at least the end of the month
Correct.
for the replacement. And I understand from previous conversation that the pilings, the, the actual structure of it is in good shape, so all it's going to require is a decking on this particular bridge. Is that the same with the other two bridges they're working on, too?
Correct. Basically, so there's, there's two parts, two major parts. There's a substructure and a superstructure. This is what's considered the superstructure. The substructure is all in good shape. The superstructure is what's failing on the, on the bridge, on the, the other four bridges as well.
So I look at that as, as being fairly fortunate from the standpoint of the, of the cost. If we were replacing the entire bridge, we'd probably be talking in excess of 400, maybe $500,000 to replace the entire bridge. This way, we're, we're only in need of replacing the decking on it.
That is correct.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Joe, I got a couple concerns or questions. One, those trucks hauling from Nemo to Rapid City, what's their gross weight?
I couldn't answer that. I don't know.
Well, how many of those trucks go across that bridge every day?
So we did look up the truck, the ADT, and the ADT on the, for the trucks was 71 back in 2019, Mark? Was that what it was?
I think that was in 19.
Yeah, 2019, so last year, and the, the daily traffic count is 959.
Because I, I used to live in that area, and I know a lot of trucks that were the year, since that bridge was built. I think a lot of that bridge wearing terrorists is from that truck traffic. That's just my opinion. Another thing, I was looking at the 2018 report, and this picture I'm looking at says cracking, spalling with severe fluorescence, and these stem deck unit number seven, span one. So is there something that was, that, that this inspection company noticed back in 2018, but it wasn't severe enough to warrant any work on it?
So a lot of what they look at to warrant, you know, and we only had so much funding at this point, right? And the closer you get to town, the more cars you pick up. So I'm not sure exactly, I, this one wasn't even on my radar that to be in, I guess, deficient or needing work. There was, as you noted in the, the bridge inspection, some stuff that does need to be fixed, but it didn't, I think the other bridges had more work, I think, is, is kind of what it comes down to. So that's the reason that this one was not chosen to, to get any work done this year.
Because we could probably take every bridge, and we could shut them down for maintenance to a certain extent. We just have to wait until it's to the point where it becomes a public safety.
Unfortunately, with the
With the lack of funds.
Correct.
Questions? Commissioner Lacroix?
I think you already answered this, Joe.
I think you already answered this, Joe, I was. You said the subcontractors couldn't really come in, you know, the materials are gonna take a month. Is it possible to get started a little bit earlier as far as dismantling, since it's gonna be shut down? It, if they were freed up, they could get prepared and be set up for when they do come in.
Well, and and it's important to note that they've got a contract to fulfill for the other four bridges too, and they've got bridges that are in. A point to where they need to get them finished up before they move on. Um, and it doesn't pay for them to come tear this bridge apart and then leave it sit, I guess. When they can finish the product and then they still be, we still have five good bridges come the end of the season, is kind of the way we were looking at it.
I'm still looking at scheduling, I mean, if they get like one done, they could come over and get prepared. And then go back over to the other ones till that.
And that's what they're.
I understand there's three, they got contracts for three others, and they're probably in the middle of one right now, I understand that, but.
They're actually in the middle of uh, finishing up the the other one that we had to to close one lane on. What, a month prior, I believe, so that's the one they're finishing up right now. Um, that, we can leave them one lane, but they're, right now they're in a critical point to where they need to at least get that bridge buttoned up. It doesn't have railings and stuff like that.
I wouldn't want them to leave one lane to come over just to disassemble, I'm talking in between jobs, it it could happen, I know.
Yeah, and they're they're not gonna leave our project, our projects is the only one they got this year, um, well, our project manager's got this year, I guess, so.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ruskin.
Joe, how many of those twentys have to be replaced?
Double Ts?
There are double Ts?
I guess on this particular bridge. I don't know the answer to that question off the top of my head, I think so there was three or four in two thousand twelve. And then there was a couple more in two thousand eight, I don't know the exact number.
Mark, do you know?
We don't have the exact number, there were several replaced in two thousand eight, and then several in two thousand twelve.
So to to get started on the replacement, they have to take the overlay off first?
Correct.
And the, how about the guardrails?
Uh, the guardrails probably won't have to come off this one, um, because the outside deck units are good. They're, those were replaced in two thousand twelve.
So the overlay, is that something they could subcontract with uh, another company in Rapid City, so they could at least have that part done?
I guess I'm not, they they probably could, um, the over, honestly, that part goes pretty quick. Uh, so and and you definitely, with the, I guess, in in my opinion, with the way the bridge is, you probably want a bridge contractor doing that. Not somebody, you know, that doesn't know their way around a bridge and know how to to attack that sort of thing. You don't wanna skid steer or another something else falling through that other side. But uh, yeah, or uh, the bridge inspector definitely said, a- and Bill started this before my time, uh, here. Giving the the asphalt overlays off these deck units, um, cause they are, it's like parking a semi on these things. Um, you know, constantly, so it's not a good thing to have these, yes, it improves the white ride quality, but. Um, your your bridge longevity goes down when you put an asphalt overlay on them, so. We've been working, every bridge we work on, we take that asphalt overlay off, so.
Any other questions, Board?
Um, just wanna note that we have a meeting, a public meeting set up in Nemo at the community hall at five thirty on Thursday, so.
Okay, I told the lady that called me that passed all the flyers around five o'clock, so I'll have to. You sent out a memo, so.
Yeah, and then Connie kind of got my brain turning, if at five o'clock, a lot of people don't have time to get off work and get there, so.
Maybe we could show up.
We'll try to be there at five.
And then at least.
Yep.
Visit with people before we start, thank you, Joe. Any other questions?
Uh, I got one more.
Go ahead, Commissioner Ruskin.
So what was the length of that uh, double T?
The one that collapsed?
Yeah.
Fifty foot, eh, fifty foot.
And what's the total length of the bridge?
Uh. Oh, there's two thirty-foot spans and an eighty-foot span, so quick math says what? Hundred and forty feet.
Yeah, a little longer in the wind, in New Underwood.
Correct, much longer. So we'd have to have a a double T to to span, or a bulb T, uh, talking to the bridge engineer to to span that whole length, so.
Good, okay, thank you, and next, South Valley?
Okay, I didn't know if you wanted to bring Dustin back up or not.
Uh, we'll have you finish, then we'll bring Dustin up, thank you for waiting, Dustin.
Okay, so South Valley, um, a couple of commissioners were at a a meeting that we held last week, time's eluding me, but. Uh, we met with the city folks, um, and came to some sort of an agreement, um. With the, with them, they are checking with their annexation folks to see if it's feasible, um, but basically our agreement. Um, or the tentative agreement would be to, for the county to fix South Valley Drive. Um, and make it into a good road, and then the the city would close that donut hole and annex that in. Um, I have not heard from Dale Tech, uh, as far as the the logistics on that. Um, this issue, you know, in two thousand fifteen, there was a joint project between the city and and county that, uh, they split fifty-fifty. Um, and I think the amount was about thirty-seven thousand dollars at that time, so. We're looking at, uh, I guess, current estimate for, that I put together was about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to to fix this six tenths of a mile. And do it right, and it'll last, you know, so. I guess with that, uh, commissioners that were there, I guess, any other questions?
Just uh, one, now that we have a bridge down, do we have the funding source for a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar road?
Uh, it's, with uh, with our ten percent cut, no. If we get some of that ten percent back, we probably could make both happen, but. Likely, you know, one's gotta give, and I guess it's up to you guys to to decide.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
Um, my opinion on that would be that, uh, uh, we don't make a decision on that until after we hear back from the city. Uh, that could take, I think, some time yet before we hear back from them, so. Uh, I would just ask that we give that reconsideration at that point in time.
Okay, Commissioner Ruskin.
Joe, who, if that road got worse, I mean, where it became a safety issue, I mean, I think it is now, but if it got much worse. Who has authority to block that off?
Yeah, you know, I guess it's public right-of-way. Mark might be able to answer that question, I don't know that we have the authority to to close it off, it's public right-of-way, you know what I mean? Um, it is signed accordingly, I guess we could put road closed signs up. Um, it's technically in the county, um, I don't, is that, is it on a section line?
It's a temporary, it used to be, uh, it's like a, before a temporary second access, before we opened it up and the city opened it up. So we might have to do a temporary closure or something like that, if that's allowable, if it gets worse.
Oh, Mark Chuck, Pennington County Highway, uh, most of South Valley Drive is on a section line. Uh, it does veer off on the far south end, the part that the city built. Uh, I believe city has jurisdiction on Minnesota, the small portion of Minnesota on that south end. Whether we could completely close it, we could close it to through traffic, probably, the city could on their end, would be my opinion in their right-of-way. At Fairmont Boulevard in our, at the end of our jurisdiction. Uh, I don't know if we could completely close the section line, the commission has the authority to close the section line, yes, but, um. It should probably, if we were gonna do that, we should probably, in my opinion, close it to through traffic and. Uh, there's warning, you know, no maintenance, a no maintenance road.
And if, bottom line is, if um, the city doesn't want to annex it in, maybe we turn it back to gravel.
And and that's a possibility.
That's a lot, lot easier and a lot cheaper for us to maintain until they decide to annex in, because it was gravel before and. It seemed to be a lot easier to drive on, I'll just tell you than it is. This road to keep doing what it's doing.
Correct. Gravel's a lot easier to maintain, but I will note that it will need some gravel, um, I don't have that. Give me a second here to pull that up.
Madam Chair.
Hold on, just a, Commissioner LaCroy, then Commissioner DeSanto.
So just to grind back to asphalt, you're looking at about thirty-seven thousand bucks total, cause it does. We cored it, there's an inch of gra- inch of base course in places, and then there's three inches of base course in others, so. My recommendation would be to add at least four inches of gravel to it to make it a a maintainable road. Uh, otherwise, you're working with slop and slate and, or not slate, but that schist that's under there, um, and it wouldn't be a maintainable road.
And maybe look at the cost of that for alternative for the future, just in case they don't want to annex in, um, Commissioner LaCroy.
Thank you, Joe, you know, first of all, I want to thank you for your hard work as far as coordination and getting, bringing these meetings together. You know, this commission approved me to to send out a letter back in September to have you guys meet with the city and and come up with some solutions. And I'll, I'm just gonna read the top part of it, so everybody understands where we come from, from September. You know, it, it, the history, it says, South Valley Drive has been a topic of city-county meetings on several occasions over the years. And has not resulted in any tangible results for the residents in the area, because we be. Because I believe we were focused in on our differences of road standards between city and county and not the residents and the future needs of the area. And some of the details we'd asked that you guys went to and sat down and discussed was what they'd like to see. It was South Valley Drive, and you know, with the new development over there and what the costs, you weren't. You were tasked not to to worry about the cost, but what you wanted, when you guys came back to the second meeting with some of the costs. Uh, they were pretty outstanding and unfeasible, you know, once we were sat down and had this discussion, so. To me, it seems like at one meeting, you guys had kind of come up with a consensus of what to go back to each group, city and the county. And the city was gonna check on going in on halves, like, cause if you're gonna redo the road, do it right. You know, last, last time we did it, we only did partial, and Joe did a good job with the numbers and. And, but in between then and now, COVID nineteen happened, and budgets got cut, so. Uh, that's when I become more aware of, is this moving forward or not, and you contacted the city and. And just found out that they didn't have the money to go forward with the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar fix. Um, at that point, once I had, I'd understood that, I'm just gonna give a little history. I'd reached out to the chairman of the CIP Committee for the city, because that's partial, part of the funding, and he'd responded that. That they probably wouldn't have the funding either, and and then Joe decided to coordinate a meeting with Dale and everybody come together. Um, to discuss what the options could be. Um, I can say at the very beginning of this back in September, my goal was to get that road fixed, fixed right. And hopefully share the the costs and get it back over to, get it over to the city at some point, that was what I was hearing from the residents. You know, and I still believe that, I I, and from the meetings, I definitely understand that. You guys been out in this area, it's been evacuated several times for flooding and so forth. And the consensus from the police department and emergency man, or response services was to. Have a second access out of that area because of these reasons, and I, I don't know whose side. No one side's wrong, I think the discussion was there and we all did it, and now we got this to deal with. Um, I, I understand us against them, it's your responsibility, it's not our road, it's you put it in. I don't care, I really don't, I I'm, the residents there, when they bought their properties, you know, they they ain't throwing them in that decision. But the road's in rough shape, and that was my number one concern, and and I tried to get. Department heads to come to co- together to discuss it and figure it out, and and kind of keep the elected officials out until. It, it's, there was a solution to to decide on, that was the whole intent back in September. Um, and that, uh, that's what I wanted to express, it's it's not about us and them, it's the residents, the number one. You know, and uh, you know, I have to admit for the, I have to disclose. For the meeting, that there was three commissioners there, and it wasn't advertised, and once I realized that, I, you know, after the meeting, the good thing about the meetings is there, there. There's me, uh, meeting notes and and I left as soon as it was over with, but. I think the discussion from that meeting, it was to have them come back with some more information, no action was taken, it was all discussion. And so I don't think there was any harm in that, but I just wanted to make sure that's out there, cause I don't want it on that on my shoulders, but. Hopefully, we can hear back from the city, and and if that doesn't work, I would suggest. Us as commissioners, our private citizens, go up in front of the Public Works Department and ask some, for some decisions. Let's start getting the decision makers to make a decision.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ruskin.
So Joe, the 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 quick fix, uh, would be roughly thirty-seven thousand to grind that asphalt up and lay down four inches of gravel?
Roughly, you know, that's rough numbers, with everything going in a perfect world, I'd just call it fifty thousand bucks.
Okay, with that being said, the commission tried to work with the city and just go fifty fifty, fifty fifty on it, and just. At least get it where it's safe, might not be pretty, but at least being safe.
Well, I guess, and and my opinion on that, Ron, is is, it'll fix, you know, it'll get it to be safe. Um, you know, it's a twenty-five mile an hour road, so, and there is a a, another way for people to go, they can go the other direction. You know, they take that road knowing that it's rough, um, and it's signed accordingly, um, if we go in there and. And do that, the the ultimate issue on this road is still not going to be solved, and that's jurisdiction or authority. Uh, you know, we can, we can do that certainly, um, but my opinion is it's not going to fix the issue. It's still gonna be five years from now, or a year from now, or two years from now, it's gonna be, okay, well, the residents are gonna be coming to the. The city or the county and saying, well, who's gonna fix this road, so.
As a commissioner, it's hard for me to have folks out in that area say, we pay taxes, why do we have to have this, and I just don't have an answer.
Well, eh, there's a lot of people that pay taxes and and they don't have that great a roads either, you know, but. Bottom, go ahead.
Hold on, just a sec, are you, do you have a follow-up?
Oh, I'm good.
Okay. Commissioner LaCroy?
One of the things that come to light out of that meeting was, I was still having, I guess, I didn't follow up on enough, was the ex. With that new development down there, I thought they were gonna redo a good portion of South Valley Drive, and that was my hopes, really, cause. Of getting that whole area redone, and when I found out it, that uh, they waived the the rights for them to improve that. That road in front of there, I was really disappointed, so that, to me, puts blame on both sides, I mean, if we're, if we want to get. Our streets in this area up to code and and up to right, you know, that area, I I looked at Creek Drive and all these other areas that got some pretty rough. I want to be a part of the solution, not the problem, is what, is what I'm thinking is for the future. And I think we gotta find a way to to get there. You know, I I I bring up Jim Street from the development there, that that kind of forced us to do some work on that. I mean, somehow or another, we need to get to that point to where, whether it's the developers before they start or or whatnot, cause. You're you're absolutely right, Joe, this isn't the only street that we have this problem with, but it's the one that's in our face right now, you know. And and with the traffic counts, it it's, it is, the city's doing nothing but expanding, so.
So, um, Commissioner Drews.
Joe, it appears, I I understand where you're coming with on the on the dollar amount for grinding that back, putting uh, gravel on it. But in driving on that, it appears to me that there's, with those soft spots, there's gonna have to be considerable work on some of those. Uh, that base and some of those areas, so thirty-seven thousand may not cut it either as far as that cost is concerned, so.
You're absolutely right, we don't know what we're getting into, and when, you know, it's like peeling an orange, you know, it looks good from the outside, and then you peel it and it's. Sour or tasteless on the inside, right, so, um, you you just don't know what you got till you peel that top off. Um, you're absolutely right, that thirty-seven thousand might, that's strictly for gravel and to lay it down.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
One benefit to turning it back to gravel is that it's going to reduce the traffic count, less people are gonna cut through there. Um, you know, it's gonna basically accomplish, I would say, the same thing as putting up signs that say, uh, no through traffic. People that would normally cut through there to get over to Catron aren't gonna cut through there anymore if it's gravel. So it'll reduce the traffic count tremendously, which will also reduce the wear and tear on the road.
And it'll save, save us money in the long run, because if it keeps doing what it's doing with asphalt or even patching, it's going to cost, like I said, 250,000. And the city wanted it, we talked about it, with a 32-foot road, it was about 1.7 million. If they wanted to bring it up to city standards. And with a 24-foot road, it'd be about 250, maybe 270, if I'm correct.
Uh, that was for, so it's 250,000 for a 22-foot road top?
With sides, right?
24-foot road top would, yeah, it'd still be about that 20, 250,000, give or take.
Right. So the bottom line is, is this, when this started, this has been around since I've been a commissioner as well. The residences in that area, there was four or five that just didn't want to annex in. So, um, the city wanted to annex them in, and then they decided as commissioners, because they had enough complaints, that they didn't annex that in. Then the city thought it was a big enough safety factor, back when I was on the city council, to open up that second access. The only thing is, when they opened up the second access, they de-annexed the road and gave it back to us. So, um, the solution is, is hopefully then, is to have them annex it and us fix it for the 24-foot road, not the 32. And if they don't, I think the solution, bottom line is, it's going to stay a county road, and it's easier to, for us to maintain, is take it back to gravel.
And just one keynote, right now, it, it is not a county road. You guys would have to make that motion to put that on the county highway system. It's not currently on the county highway system.
So basically.
And the problem.
It's nobody's, no man's.
It's no man's land.
That's what they keep saying.
And that's that, and that is ultimately the, the issue with this piece of road, the, the .6 miles from Fairmont Boulevard to, to East Minnesota, is that there's no road jurisdiction, and that's why, you know, the residents want response, as, as Lloyd said. But the city annexed it and then de-annexed it, and, you know, they, the city, the city put, made it a through street, I guess, much like Jim Street, same, same scenario, just a lot less houses on Jim Street. So, it's, it's the same scenario that we're at again, and ultimately, I guess, it's, it's your guys' decision.
Madam Chair.
And if we're going to keep that road, it seems like you'd turn it back to something we could maintain in the future that wouldn't just keep costing us 250 or 100,000 or whatever, just keep repairing it. Because if you keep having those soft spots up there and road issues, meaning if we don't have culverts and everything, make that into what it needs to be, it's going to keep failing, so.
When did it go from asphalt to gra, or from gravel to asphalt?
That's a question for the history extraordinaire over there, Mark. I don't know. I think nine, in the late 90s is when it got punched through. Might, well, maybe not.
And all of those residences, most, I mean, most of them were in existence already prior to it becoming?
I don't think it was asphalt. I think it was gravel too there, and then they put the, or they put the.
I, I used to live out there. I remember when it was gravel. I don't remember when it changed over, but.
Mark, the question was, when did that convert from gravel to asphalt?
Oh, we're not completely sure. It was not on the highway, county highway system. It was at one time, but not until 2007. And it was done sometime before that. My understanding is, is a gravel road and, and a developer or someone with interest in developing at the end of that road had asphalt put on it themselves. And my understanding is also that it was just, asphalt's typically put in on two lifts, a bottom lift and a top lift, two inches each lift. The bottom lift was put in, and then the development fell through, or they decided not to develop for some reason and walked away from the road. Pennington County took it over without knowing that. There's only a bottom lift, but found out later. And when the city put in the, the second egress, that's when it was decided that it was removed from the county secondary system. And that's where we're at now, today.
And I guess even Google Maps, this image was September of 2011. You can tell that the second egress wasn't there, and it's, you know, it was an asphalt road. As Mark said, the, the developer just put a bottom lift on it, so there's only two inches of asphalt on it.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LeCray.
Thanks for the information. What I've gathered from this, no road authority, and, and what was requested to the city do is check on the annexation. And Joe had come up with a good, I thought, proposal that in order to fix the road right would be the 250, but then the city would take it over. That's a good option for them that's sitting there. If they choose not to go that route, then I think we consider the gravel road. So I think that's where, that's where I'm at with this. Depending on if the annexation, if they go forward with that, I would be okay with one. If not, I'm okay with the other one. And even going forward, quite frankly, with, uh, the, the fix that you originally offered, Joe, was not as wide as their standards. If they wanted it that way, more wider, I would say they'd have to, I think you'd come up with the cost of 30,000, 40,000. Wasn't it something like that?
To, to go back to go to a 24-foot?
Yeah, if they wanted it to that, I think they'd have to at least, at the very minimum, come up with that. But otherwise, they didn't follow it downstream. You know, we can build it to our standard upstream, and, and then they can fix it later. But I mean, that's, that's kind of where I'm at. I, I am totally agreement with, one way, this was just informational to get us all on the same page and see where we're at. But I think more information's needed, and that's where I'm at.
Madam Chair.
So maybe, Joe, at, at some time soon, maybe contact Dale and see if he has any information, anything that, what he's going to have to do is talk to Patsy, see what annexation, what that process is, and then see if that city council, or I don't know if it goes to planning commission, I think city council are willing to move forward on annexation. But as we recall too, they did de-annex the sod farm, so, I don't know.
My question, Joe, is how many residents does that serve or pieces of property? Six, seven?
I think there's.
So, could you, could you, could you almost call it a driveway?
It's got a traffic count of about 1,200, doesn't it?
About 1,300, so.
That's not for those residences at that end of the road, though. He's right. There's only seven.
Yep.
And for seven resident, five or seven residences, I'd hate to get too extravagant on whatever the fix is.
Correct.
Because there is alternative, better alternative routes that people can take.
Absolutely, and, and I agree, Ron. There's, there's an alternate route, you know, if people, they can, they can ultimately go and hit the bypass, you know, go this direction and, and hit the bypass. Let's see here. I think there's one, two, three. I think there's, like, yeah, there's only.
There a trailer cord on the other side of the bridge?
One.
Yes.
But that's in the city limits.
On Scott Street and some other.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
This is all in the city limits. So it'd be one, two, three, four, five residents, that, above that section of roadway.
Yep. That's because there are a lot of ranches and stuff, and they didn't want, they were afraid once they got annexed in, which is true. They would be grandfathered in as they are, but if they changed anything on their properties, they'd have to follow city standards, so.
If it's no man's land, then I really kind of see it up to the owners to take care of that. Because it ain't ours, it ain't the city's. Whose is it? Well, if it's nobody's, I would think the, the five residences that use it to access your properties would be, it'd be more theirs than anybody, the way I see it.
Yeah, I guess.
We could say that, but even in your district, you have a lot of people that we, we serve that way, and not just yours, all of ours.
Could be my role.
And we do it for a, we do it for a safety factor.
Madam Chair.
Like I said, there's about a thousand something cars on there now. It isn't just, you know, a few people. And we do a lot of roads for 10 people, so.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LeCray.
I think one of the biggest things, there was some good information throughout these meetings, and Rusty Schmidt had one of the best ones as far as the infrastructure. When you talk about somebody was going to develop out there, and this property, with what we discussed, could, it's going to be 20-plus years. It's, it's too expensive to get the utilities out there from our discussion. So, I mean, that was one of the things that the Rapid Valley Santeri Sewer District came up with. And it was great that he showed up at the meeting and had some good insight too, so.
So bottom line, guys, we'll see how Joe does with the city and how we move forward on that, on annexation, and, and what's our next steps. And maybe you could inform us maybe on the next meeting, Joe, after that update.
Yeah, I'll see if I get a response from Dale, and then maybe we'll put it on the, the agenda if we get a response.
All righty. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Um, next, we're going to bring Dustin Willett up. Can we take his number 15 off the table?
So.
By Drew, second by LeCray. All in favor, say aye.
All right.
All opposed? Moshe carries. Sorry, Dustin.
Oh, and I apologize. Dustin Willett, Rapid Valley Pennington County Emergency Manager. We're smack dab in the middle, literally today, right now, of moving from the Civic Center to North Lacrosse. We're going to have people in there this afternoon, so we've been in and out of the office all day. I forgot I was supposed to be here.
What were they doing over, what were they digging?
Uh, waterline. So the waterline that, that disrupted that facility a week prior to us exploring it, when the contractor got in to make those repairs, the further they peeled back the dirt, the scarier it looked. And that whole chunk needed to be replaced prior to, to, to returning on the water, we would have been right back into a, a water break.
And how many people are you moving potentially over there?
Five in there today, plus staff. So that's what we'll move over this afternoon. So, I'll, I'll, I'll end with some of the stuff on the shelter. I'll start with a very, very brief COVID overview. Probably not going to tell anybody anything that they don't already know. COVID is still moving through our community. It's still being transmitted in, in our community. There's still community spread. The two things that hold true right now is, is again, we talked about there not just being this parabolic curve. It's, it's going to go up and down. For the last several days, our active cases in Pennington County have been trending up. If we look at, if we look at it in a matter of days, if we look at, at a week at a time or seven days at a time, we had a period of, of, you know, three weeks there where it was solidly trending down. And, and over the last week, we're trending back up. I think currently, in terms of active cases right now, there's 149 active cases in Pennington County. So our, our numbers of active cases o, over the last few days are trending up. However, our hospitalizations, which again, back to management by objectives, our objective was to not overwhelm healthcare, and our actual, our hospitalization numbers are, are, are lower than they were just a week or two ago. So, so our hospitalized, our hospitalization numbers are, the, 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 the state of our healthcare locally is still good, which is, again, our primary hope through all of this is that our, our healthcare remains intact. And so that, that still remains the same, but our active cases are trending up in Pennington County. Remains to be seen what large gatherings have on, on numbers. Again, a lot of that will be dependent on testing. We're still not doing, I, I say we're still not, we may never. But, but, you know, testing is kind of a weird thing. It's, it's a snapshot in time, and it's only really as, as valuable as that whole testing process is. And, and so just testing the people that you think have it, which is pretty much still where we're at, doesn't necessarily give the kind of data that the public and/or decision makers, elected officials are necessarily looking for. So, we're still not doing these big, huge, community-wide snapshot testing events. And I, I, I don't know if we, if we ever will in this community or not. But, so, so what that, the reason I bring that up is, is, you know, we just had the, the 3rd of July Independence Day celebration at Rushmore. We've got Sturgis Rally coming up in a month, those types of events. People speculate on what the impact might be of, of infection, control and disease spread in those events. And, and we're all just kind of waiting to see how that plays out locally, and what type of testing ends up coming on the heels of that. So, still less known, I mean, we still know, less than we do, I mean, I don't know how to phrase that. We wish we knew a lot more than, than we currently do on, on all of it, on, on transmission vectors and exactly what it looks like, or what COVID looks like in our community right now. But happy to stand for any questions on, on that, considering that part of it.
Commissioner DeSanto.
So, you talked about our main objective, not overwhelming the hospital system. So let's get a little clarity on that. How many beds are available?
I could log in and find that, but we've been working on moving the shelter today, so I haven't logged in today to look.
Okay. Ballpark?
Uh, how many, what kind of beds?
For COVID, do we have specials areas in the hospital set aside for COVID?
Yep, so, so speaking in total generalities, going back to, to, um, previous data, seems to me they had the capacity set aside for COVID was somewhere in the, the 80-bed range, if I remember those numbers correctly, and currently we have 25.
Occupied?
Mm-hmm.
And how many were occupied at the highest level of since the infection began?
Was in the 40s.
So half.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Living in District 1, I'm on Highway 16, Highway 385. Over the 4th of July, for every, out of 15 cars tour South Dakota on an average, 13 were out of state. Out of state place I've never seen. I mean, this doesn't set good with me, but.
So anecdotally, no data to, to, to support it. So this is purely subjective from my counterparts. But we, we visit regularly with emergency managers in, in western South Dakota. And my counterparts in Lawrence County, Custer County, speaking specifically about the town of Custer and, and Lead, both of those emergency managers who have been in the job decades and decades, longer than I have, all of them said that, that they've never seen that many people in their community. The emergency manager for Lawrence County said he's never seen that many people on the streets of Deadwood. And Custer County said, I've never seen this many people in, in Custer. And that was a week ago, two weeks ago.
So I guess that's what they call the herd method?
So one of the things that we looked at originally or early on was depending on, on fuel prices and the impact on air travel and people's general cabin fever, and the fact that when you look at solid numbers, when you just jump online and look at numbers, the Midwest is relatively low, South Dakota is relatively low. So, if you're around the country, you don't want to fly, but gas is cheap and you want to drive and you want to get out of the house, or an attractive destination. And so that, it was one of the scenarios is, holy smokes, we might get, we might be a really popular place this summer. And anecdotally, I don't have numbers to back that up, but anecdotally, it, it would appear as, as though we've got a lot of visitors in the area over the last couple of weeks, and that doesn't show at this point in time of any indication of slowing down, so.
Well, April and May, we started to go up in numbers for people out of state. And then this month, and our June and July has just peaked. And I see in July and August, it's going to keep going in September. So, like you said, Dustin, I think we're an attractive state because of the low numbers and the outdoor activities. People think they're more safe that way. So I don't see it getting any lower and from the surrounding areas, Keystone, Hill City and other people saying they're swamped.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
I think as, and Dustin, you may even have numbers when, where it comes to this, but I think as other states open up their parks and their facilities for entertainment, the influx of people into South Dakota area will, will slow down. But I think you nailed it on the head when you talk about, when people, the cabin fever effect probably is the largest contributor to all these people traveling. They, they were shut up in, you know, in their homes for 30 days, 45 days, and not even allowed in a lot of states to even go to a park. And now all of a sudden, things are starting to open up, and they're like, we got to get out of here, so I think.
Well, the, the businesses are loving it because they're making more money. But again, even the folks around in South Dakota, you know, all over South Dakota are moving around in South Dakota a lot more. Like you said, that cabin fever is huge.
Yeah, so it is what it is, what that means in terms of, of infection and disease spread. Uh, we can all speculate. We can all, uh, make some general assumptions that that, uh, that number of people, that number of influx, uh, will lead to increased cases. That's a a reasonable, rational, uh, conclusion to come to, but we just don't know. Uh, and so it's a matter of, uh, even though the the E O C has stood down from our our large operations with, you know, a whole bunch of extra people and and daily reporting, um, I still pull up those. I haven't done it today, uh, Commissioner DeSanto, but I still pull up those numbers daily and track those numbers daily, uh, just to see what our what our trends look like. Uh, it's just, it's tough. Uh, the the hospital number is a good, solid number because that's something that we're we're really looking at and really tracking. Uh, the testing and active cases, uh, the data is what the data is, and the data is certainly not complete, so.
Well, the bottom line, we knew cases were going to go up. We were more worried about when those cases went up, what would happen for hosp- hospitalization and be able to cover those cases. So, I think, um, we're not going to go down in cases, but hopefully we don't go up in hospitalizations from the cases.
So, the interesting thing to look at will be, uh, do we see any statistically significant, any measurable correlation between, um, I mean, the the test that we just ran was third of July. So, um, you know, we had a a big influx of people in a close area, some locals, lots of out of state. So, we had this this test bed, um, and it'll be really interesting over the next couple of weeks to see what that means, what how that plays out. So, I don't have the answers for that, but certainly something that we are keeping a a close eye on. Um, um, so, yeah, we'll.
My my thought is, is that if a person's concerned, then they just follow safe practices. Just stay around, uh, don't get around big crowds and and, uh, do your social distancing.
Commissioner Drews?
I agree with Commissioner DeSanto. I think his remarks were right on track. But also, uh, I've had the opportunity to speak to three different families that were here. One from New York, one from Florida, and one from Illinois. Uh, the Illinois family, uh, the father had been here when he was a young child, uh, said it looked like a safe place to be, and so he brought his whole entire family over here. Uh, the people from New York, this was not their destination, but they had never been here. They're on their way to Glacier, uh, and just said, we've got the time. Uh, we got in the car and we just are driving. They were from upstate New York, and the people from Florida said, we've just never been here. We're we're going to go onto the Grand Tetons, but we wanted to spend some time in the hills. That actually was on Friday when I spoke with that that couple. Um, they also were at Mount Rushmore, so. So, I think, you know, we've got, uh, you know, this entire area, when you're looking up, uh, you know, it looks like, uh, an area that hasn't had a lot of the virus. It looks like a pretty safe place, I think, for people to come. Uh, I'm not sure that we ever anticipated we'd have that many from that far away. It's different license plates than they normally see during the tourist tourist season here. Um, as I speak to, uh, the tourist places, uh, they're they're pretty pleased at this point in time that they got the numbers coming through again, so.
Yeah, and, you know, people, uh, I I won't say people have all made up their minds. Um, but by and large, uh, infection control techniques are are pretty widely disseminated at this point. Uh, so, um, people should be washing their hands, uh, people should not be going out when they're sick. Uh, and the 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 more controversial one is is certainly, um, uh, face coverings, cloth face coverings. Uh, we know that 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 reduces transmissions in certain certain social environments. And and, uh, there's certainly a a fair degree of social pressure for people to to mask up when they are, um, in public settings. Uh, and, uh, um, obviously, we're we're pretty split in this part of the country on on folks that do and folks that don't. Uh, but if we go back to to solid, um, uh, you know, wash your hands and and don't go out when you're sick, that that gets us, uh, at at least partway down that that road. I think the best, the best, um, I don't know if it's appropriate to share it here or not, but I saw a great joke the other day that said, an epidemiologist and and, uh, a physician walk into a bar. I'm just kidding, they both know better, so.
[laughing]
So, so, uh, uh, at this at this point, and and we've heard our governor say it, we've heard, we've heard, uh, the 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 political side of this, um, um, uh, right, wrong, or indifferent, uh, about personal responsibility. And and, uh, I would say at this point that that a majority of the population, um, I won't say understand the risk, but certainly know the risk. And they might not understand all the infection control techniques, but they certainly know about the infection control techniques. So, there certainly is a degree of of of, um, personal responsibility in in the the types of social settings and events and situations you put yourself into. Uh, that being said, we we all should have some measure of social responsibility to protect those that are vulnerable in our communities, uh, nursing home and immunocompromised and and those, that we should all feel a burden to to, uh, protect those who who, uh, are are extraordinarily vulnerable. But, um, other than that, I think, uh, folks know, um, for the most part, that the situation we're in.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dustin. I think we need to move on to some of the directives of the facilities and the preparation, um, necessary for policies and procedures at this time.
So, let me speak really, really quick, Chair, to, um, uh, our, because it's germane to this, maybe not this meeting, but soon to follow up. With with this transition from the Civic Center to North Lacrosse, uh, the timeline losing the incident management team, there's a lot of decisions that need to be made and 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 action that needs to be taken at an elected official level that that we weren't able to get on to this agenda. So, I'll work with Holly and and Cindy and, um, I'm working with the counterparts in the city as well. But we've got, uh, several big things that that have some really tight timelines on them. One is as we as we disassemble the the Civic Center, there are some shower surrounds and some things like that that were purchased with, uh, uh, some, um, J T Witkrowich grant dollars that we don't have the play, we don't have the need for, and we don't have the place to the the, um, physical location to store them. So, uh, we need to to explore, um, uh, making them, uh, uh, declaring them surplus for the 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 sake of donation, primarily shower surrounds. We've got, uh, you know, nine shower surrounds that that we need, uh, it would be, um, uh, anyway. Uh, so, so some some stuff from the Civic Center that we need to to hopefully, uh, get donated to to someplace reasonable in the community. Um, uh, there'll be a a request for bringing on a an employee to help manage the shelter. Uh, our staff is just swamped trying to make this happen. Uh, and then the other is, uh, funding, uh, as we go beyond the the twenty-sixth, the date that we had originally established. Uh, you know, the city and the county originally pledged, uh, seventy-five thousand dollars each towards operating the shelter. Uh, we've come up to to drawing those funds down, and we need to, um, reauthorize and expend them to to continued operations. So, those are three big things that, uh, we didn't get on this agenda, but I'm not sure if they're going to wait until next agenda, so more to come on that.
Dustin, just one thing, um, we should probably meet with the the same people we met with last time on the funding, to ask for funding on each side because the city will be get funding from COVID and so will we, and we can use that, I believe.
Yeah, so the way, and not to to get down into too many, um, uh, weeds with that, certainly been having discussions with, uh, Pauline Sumption with the city and and Cindy here with the auditor's office. Um, so ultimately, it's running through, uh, a county account, kind of like my office does. So, ultimately, we end up writing the the entire check for the invoices, and then we invoice the city for half of that. So, when it comes to applying for reimbursement, uh, that full reimbursement will be applied through for the county because we're the ones writing the whole checks. And then making sure things balance between the city and the county, uh, is is a function between the city finance office and the auditor's office. So, we'll make that, we'll make sure that all balances in the end. Uh, it's just a matter of making sure that that, uh, this body, uh, is is comfortable and authorizes the continued expenditure of money, uh, for this operation, so.
Maybe a meeting soon, then?
Yes, I will. I will work with the the relevant people and we'll get something, uh, put together sooner rather than later.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Um, do we need the H R with Dustin, Holly on the directives? Okay. So, this would be for still fifteen, right? Four directives of moving forward on policies and procedures for the building? Okay, so we have some things, um, that were sent to you from, uh, board from the department head meeting. Um, did everybody get those, that email about public defenders and and Janet's office and, okay? So, are you asking us, basically, Holly, if we're opening July thirteenth, except for the exception of public defender and?
Yes, um, basically, today, Board, that we're asking for some direction on what the board would like to see for a soft opening for our facility, um, what that looks like for lifting the restricted access that we have. We did have a department head meeting last Thursday, and the departments have reported that they would be ready for an opening come this next Monday, the thirteenth, with the exception of the public defender and the state's attorney's office. And those are directly due to, um, a a pretty good, significant amount of their employees being on furlough, um, till the end of July. So, they would request an exception to open the twenty-seventh.
Okay, that's what I have down. So, you're asking for a soft opening July thirteenth, basically, because we won't be having the state's attorney or public defender till July twenty-seventh? And then what will that look like? So, the motion would be the thirteenth, basically, for everybody except those two. Partial, basically, a soft opening, meaning, um, by the soft opening, we can't open all the departments at that point. And then do we need to do health screenings and what that what is that going to look like?
Correct. If you would like to direct the sheriff's office to still maintain a deputy upstairs to do the screenings of the public as they're coming in, or if that would go away when it's time to do a full opening, um.
Okay, and then face coverings, um, that could be optional?
Whether you'd want the public to be mandated to wear them, whether you would give the sheriff's office the ability to, um, ask someone to leave if they are showing symptoms or require them to wear a mask while they're in the building. Also empower our employees to do the same thing.
Okay.
The, if you guys do decide to do this, I, we would need to bring a resolution back to the next meeting because the hours of the operations are set via resolution, and we would need to re-update that.
Okay, but we could still open on the thirteenth.
Correct. We would prepare the news releases, update the website, communicate with our employees, uh, make all those necessary arrangements. So, we're looking for that direction.
Commissioner Drews?
I think we need to take these in several different pieces. So, I would, uh, offer a motion to, um, for a partial reopening of facilities, uh, for July thirteenth, with the exception of the offices of the state's attorney and the public defender's office.
Second.
To open on July twenty-seventh.
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth.
Soft opening.
Meaning the.
Those those other two for the twenty-seventh?
Yes, sir.
You want that, Holly, as part of the same motion?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Okay, is that okay with the second?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next is for screenings for the deputy, or do we not?
I would make a motion that we continue to screen.
Motion made by DeSanto.
By the deputy.
Second by LaCroy for screenings. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries, and face coverings.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
Brian would like to speak, it looks like.
You don't have a choice now. Just kidding.
If if I may, Madam Chair, Brian Miller, Pennington County Sheriff's Office, again. Just just a question, if we're going to do that, are we talking about maintaining just one point of entry in the facility?
Yes.
Yes.
If we could clarify that, because that obviously wouldn't be possible.
Right.
Yep. I think for the safety of the employees and the, uh, citizens, that one point of entry is.
We would like to have asked the board to make that motion to leave the first floor doors locked going forward.
I'd make that motion.
In the administration building.
Motion by Drews.
Second.
One point of entry, doors locked. And the other is second by DeSanto. Any discussion?
Uh, Madam Chair, just got a couple of questions.
Commissioner.
Relative to face masks, does the county have face mask?
We're not on face mask yet.
Okay.
Hold on, just a minute, Commissioner Russ.
Relative to screenings, does the county have a thermometer, temperature thing?
We we have access to one, but that is not part of the screening currently.
Okay, I just, that, that's one of the, last time I went to a facility, they they just asked me some verbal questions and they did a temperature. And so I just wondered if we're going to follow any protocol like that.
And, uh, the sheriff's opinion is we'd like to not do temperatures unless you wanted to assign other staff up to do that. We'd like to not do that with our security staff.
Okay, just wanted some clarification there.
Do we have questions, however? Do we ask, are you experiencing any symptoms? Are you?
We we have a screening form that we've been using that we could continue to use as long as we kept the setup the same. We'd need to, we wouldn't just be able to open those doors carte blanche and try to grab everybody coming through, or we're going to really have a mess up there if we're going to actually try to screen them one at a time, so.
Okay, so we we have the screening and now it's the one point of entry?
Yep.
Um, we do have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Now, face coverings. Commissioner, did you have Russ connect?
I just wondered if the county's going to supply them. If, uh, if somebody comes in, they don't have them, do we have any on stock?
You know, it would be our opinion to not require the face masks at this time. If we wanted to do that, we could have that discussion. They they are doing that, uh, at the courthouse, but it is causing some issues because people are coming in, they don't have face masks. They're going out to the car to try to fashion some type of face mask where they have to leave. Um, people are, we have to leave children unattended in cars if they don't have face masks. It's it creates a lot of issues for one person who also is tasked with the security to try to accomplish at the same time.
So, we're saying optional face mask for employees and, um, people coming in the building.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy?
What kind of feedback are we getting from our employees? Do they want to make it optional? Is it something they feel comfortable with? You know, we're getting, I'm getting mixed, uh, messages from people, not per se employees, but in the community.
You bet. No, um, John Morale, Pennington County Human Resources. Uh, Commissioner LaCroy, um, I'm getting the same feedback, so mixed messages. Um, there is a group of people that are more concerned about, uh, contracting COVID or related illnesses. Um, there's a group of people that are much less concerned, so again, it's been mixed messages. Um, I think having a screening in place will be, um, satisfactory, honestly, from my personal perspective. Um, I I do believe that if there's any sign of symptoms, that we have the ability to turn them away, uh, I think is a key component of that screening, um, and I think would be satisfactory again for most employees. Um, most of the concerns that I've had are what if, um, not necessarily that they're at risk, uh, but they understand, and the message has been pretty consistent across most, uh, venues of of communication, if you will. But, um, the the cloth face covering or the face covering of some type, uh, seems to mitigate or minimize, I should say, the possibility of transmission. Um, so there's a benefit of wearing them, uh, not to the person wearing them, but to the people they're in contact with. Um, most of our folks have been, uh, again, on either side of the fence. There's very few that are in between, uh, they either say, yep, masks are necessary, or masks aren't. Uh, but I I couldn't put a number to it, sir.
Just to follow up, I, thanks, John. I I think we're finding that all over in the community as far as how how that's working. And and the main thing is is for your own personal safety and and for your others, what what helps you. Um, I'm not so sure about mandating somebody do it, but I know we're we're getting struggles in the workplaces whereas, uh, I want you to, if you're not, you know, and I think we've done a pretty good job. We just need to remind people of the standards of of, of, you know, the six feet difference of washing your hands. Keep that going because I think we're we're getting, some of us are getting lax.
Well, if you look at the employees, I'm seeing behind the screens, a lot of them don't have face masks now, so.
Yeah, we would be at the screens. That helps with the security.
Yeah, I think that just made a lot of people feel a lot better. Commissioner.
Morning, Madam Chair, Mark Bargo, Pennington County State's Attorney. I just wanted to let you know, my staff does seem to feel very strongly about having visitors to the office, wearing the mask for my staff's protection. We have a number of people who are immunocompromised or care for people who are, and so we will be mandating that within the office. And I would also like to say I deeply appreciate your willingness to work with us on the twenty-seventh. That was part of the whole deal that we kind of struck with you and trying to make sure we're doing what the commission wanted in terms of budget. And I think that that'll definitely help us make this transition better for both our staff and for the public.
That's that's a prime example of, they know what their department and their people want. If and and if that's what makes your little community feel better.
And same with like Barry's, if he wants to do it. I mean, if people feel comfortable and the department's doing that, um, they'll have to make sure that people ahead of time, of course, that are coming to their places know that or, um, have face masks for them.
And we've already ordered some of the disposable, the 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 paper, the the thin cloth that we can use. Uh, but we're also letting people know that when they're setting up appointments, we warn them ahead of time, so hopefully we won't have to give as many of them out. But absolutely, we're trying to get that word out that if you're coming inside our office, uh, that you'll be required to wear a face mask at that. But absolutely, we're trying to get that word out that if you're coming inside our office, uh that you'll be required to wear a face mask at that time.
You know, that that I hate to go back and forth, but that's good information for us to know. So if we get a phone call, we can say. State's attorneys, they're requiring public defenders, are they? Aren't they? Maybe each department.
I think Eric was considering it. I don't know if he's made a decision yet.
Madam Chair.
Just so we have that information. Commissioner DeSanto.
Um I think actually that it would be a good idea to uh make it mandatory. When there's direct public to employee contact, such as in the public defenders office. If you're sitting across the desk from somebody without a screen in front of you, then I think that the that the public should be masked up. If you were if they're coming to an office that has the uh the screen um in between. Then not so necessary, but to protect our employees um in that situation where it's direct public to employee contact. Um I would lean in that direction.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross.
I'd probably even go one step further. I would give Mark the discretion. They have one of those temperature monitors. Because a lot of people will sit there and fill the fill those screen uh forms out. Uh and if they want to get in here bad enough, they're not gonna admit that they're sick. They're not gonna, I mean, some people, so. Uh just for an extra, maybe each department at their own discretion, they could say, look, if somebody's gonna go face to face with my one of my employees, I want to check their temperature.
I appreciate the Commissioner Ross connect. I will tell you that we anticipate, we've ordered a couple of touchless thermometers for exactly that reason. And we anticipate using, once we're on a full opening and the sheriff's office is no longer doing that pre-screening, we will begin that pre-screening at our office. Again, just for the people who are coming inside. If you're at the window, we've got the plexiglass, we're not nearly as worried about that.
We have Adra's office, we have Barry's office, we have Equalization. Are we gonna get thermometers and masks for everybody?
One-on-one contact.
So Dustin Willett again. Um and for those that have already ordered, fantastic. I I thought we had, I think Alexa had brought up uh before. So we have, uh out of the ones that we have checked out, um I think we've got twelve or thirteen. Uh thermometers and twelve or thirteen uh little finger pulse oximeters uh that we can we that they're sitting in a cabinet. We ordered them just in case this eventuality. Came to pass. So we have uh in in our possession. Pulse oximeters and and thermometers that we can check out to anybody who who would want them in in the county. So I just wanted to make sure we need that.
Ask how um accurate taking temperatures are.
If you got a fever, it shows it. The question is how many people have fevers and and so you start playing the number. There is no one screening that's going to catch everybody. There are people that are asymptomatic. There are people that never get febrile. It's not a hundred percent. It's just a matter of how many do you catch. It's certainly one if it. I think it comes down to the discussion that we're having here uh and the department directors and heads that know what their employees feel comfortable with. Uh it's an additional level of screening and and honestly, to me, that would be um a a department director knows their people, knows their comfort, knows what they want to do. I think everybody understands it's not a hundred percent safety net. If people want to do that, take the time, build the process to make that happen. I just wanted to let the. The other departments and and let the commission know that we have a stock of uh some devices if if people want them.
So are you returning into um which department and which not to feel safe at, which not to come to because she won't wear a mask and they're taking temperatures? Are we starting something that either we do or we don't, guys, because I think you can't do partial. Go over to Janet's office, say no, and go to state's attorneys and say yes, go to Barry's and say no, and then go to um John's and say yes. And then so you're confusing the public on actually what's happening.
But Madam Chair, the the there's the departments like the treasurer's office have screened. They they're not sitting down. Across the desk from a uh from the public. If they have to, then I would recommend that they recommend the public have a.
But I you're talking the safety of the employees as well. So if the safety of the employees and janits want temperatures and and things uh done. They should have the same right as state's attorneys, whether they have a screen or not, because that screen might not be screening everything. So. That's what I'm saying. So what do you what are we sending for mixed messages?
Madam Chair. At this point in the discussion, I'm not interested in talking about the temperatures and going that route. We're talking about face masks. And the comfort of our employees and so forth. Mark's idea of any one-on-one contact, making that every, you know, a requirement, it's not a bad idea. A good majority of the work that we do is not one-on-one. We got the barriers in front of us. I I could see that not being. But if you're doing one-on-one in the same room, being cautious, I don't have a real problem with that. I think the temperature thing, I I listen to my wife when she goes back from from trips to Sioux Falls and there's some restaurants that. Are doing that, you know, is it a hundred percent? No, I don't think with the volume of people we got and what we got going, that's something to really consider at this point in time. Unless that unless you're dealing with people that have health issues, you know, the the more vulnerable, I can see that. That's that's a common sense part, but I guess I would like to hear what some of these guys' thoughts on. On what Mark has had, you know, if you're just a requirement on one-on-one, if you have a barrier. I think that's good, but if you're doing one-on-ones like state's attorney and public defenders, should we require?
And is there not areas that you could put barriers up for your employees and not have to have all that happening to make everybody the same? And number two, if they are vulnerable, I wouldn't have them at work with COVID. So. There's a couple of things that maybe you could do differently if you're gonna have face to face. You know, having some kind of screen between desk or something because it's not that hard to build the screen. I mean, it's gonna take. Um time for Mike and those guys to build a screen between two people and a desk. Because the desk, a lot of times are are set up where you could put something on there for a screen, so you don't have to do all that, but. Um I don't know what's cheaper, what's what makes people feel more safe, but. Um to set a different precedent somewhere else than we have in other areas, I think you're you're gonna have the public with a lot of complaints.
Madam Chair, just a couple of quick points if I if I may. In areas that we have uh access to the public where we don't have screens right now, we've set up a six-foot barriers, either with tables on the outside or tape on the inside to keep our staff at a safe distance, which has been working very effectively. And just a quick point on on uh temperatures, because we've been doing that for quite a while entering any of our facilities, is. The the heat out, the outside temperature makes a big difference on how much time you have to wait to get an accurate temperature. So if somebody walks in when it's ninety degrees. Um to come in to come to an appointment or to come visit another department, it could take as much as ten to fifteen minutes for their skin to normalize to get an accurate temperature. You're gonna get a lot of misreadings. Just for people's heads up, just a lesson that we've learned on the temperature end of things. Thank you.
So I would I would take that into consideration and even in the state's attorney's office is maybe putting that six-foot barrier instead of making different requirements for different. Different departments, but the face masks are a little bit different.
So Madam Chair, uh John Morale, Pennington County Human Resources, a couple of points I just want to make um clear or help understand. With regard to taking temperatures, if you're taking employee temperatures, it's considered a medical examination. Those records or any data that's collected must be maintained as a medical record in a secure location. And it also has to be kept by a person that's been trained to do the temperature checks consistently, the same person or another person that's has been trained. There are some very uh stringent requirements, if you will, with regard to taking temperatures of employees.
Well, have you worked with Mark or the public defenders to tell on that?
We haven't been working on that yet, no. So again, understanding the EDPs. You also made comment about if we have employees that are at risk, they shouldn't be here. They need to make the request for an accommodation. We can't, based upon our opinions or our our assumptions about their health, make that determination. They have to speak up. They have to request an accommodation uh of some type that would allow them to work uh in an environment that helps protect them.
I just think.
So again, there's a a very stringent process and communication piece that has to take place for that to happen.
But John, if they're vulnerable, I guess I wouldn't have them right now um at work or have other accommodations.
Sure, if they've made that request, we we can consider that. Again, we can't make that assumption for them. It's illegal.
Madam Chair.
Um hold on just a sec, Commissioner DeSanto. Um Barry, Health and Human Services, then Janet.
Good morning, Barry Tice, the Director of Pennington County Health and Human Services. As I've said for the past couple of months, we will continue. To use technology uh which works well within our office to limit the amount of walk-in traffic. Um my piece to the temperature check is, should we require that on a countywide. Level, at least coming into our office, which is a portion of the care campus, I would have to figure out who would be assigned to check temperatures. To comply with the rules of that and we hope to limit the amount of people coming in our office, but that would mean. At this point, we would have to have a staff member because obviously we don't have a deputy or anybody assigned to that. So we'd have to have somebody who would check the temperature of every. Individual that comes in. Um oftentimes coming in under the influence of some sort of substance because we're the front facing door. Um to the facility. So I say that because we obviously will comply with whatever you s- suggest and based on human resources, but. The other piece that we are using um to our advantage is we're, you know, we appreciate buildings and grounds putting up the. Plexiglass or Lexon or whatever it is to protect our administrative staff because they would be the first point of contact with us. And when it comes to face masks, we have said that. Uh and I have suggested that we want folks to use what they've used to keep themselves safe the past three months. Because to this point, uh we've been very fortunate with our staff and as we look at bringing bringing them back and they've been in our office now for the past few weeks working. Uh like Mr. Vargo has done with half staff in the office, half staff remotely, so.
So Barry, do you have anybody screening at your front door?
No, but we have not opened to the public yet.
Okay, so maybe when you do some type of screening, kind of like the deputy does. I mean, if they but how do you? That's true. How do you tell if they're sick or not when they have underlying issues of alcoholism and drug abuse, so?
So my piece to that is, and we've talked about this for a few weeks with staff, is if somebody comes in and they're physically. Coughing and pieces like that, that's when we will start to ask questions. We have some disposable masks that. We've accessed through Amazon and the government link provides us a little quicker access to it. I don't know exactly how it works, but it works. Because we got two hundred disposable face masks for the public. So if somebody's appearing to be sick, we're gonna start asking some questions and then I. Feel from your support and from HR's support, if a refusal to put on a mask or comply with some of the rules that we're asking people to comply with, then we ask them to leave nicely. Um I I feel like. We should be getting to that point where some of this is understandable. I mean, if you're gonna call fumble over staff members, I'm gonna ask you to leave and that's where. Relies on supervision to come up and have those sometimes difficult conversations, but. It just becomes a little more unmanageable when I have to try to figure out who I'm going to assign to check temperatures on every single walk-in that comes through the door, which. A lot of this is just based on what we know at this point, and so we're trying to do the best we can to limit the amount of people coming through our door.
So it makes sense to to not require a face mask unless the departments decide on the people that they believe are you're screened and they believe that you need a face mask. Instead of us telling them, people in the public, everybody has to wear a face mask.
Now to Commissioner DeSanto's point, when it comes to face masks, we have a lot of uh we have a large homeless population we work with and so. Part of the piece we're doing with case management side of things is we are not utilizing the offices that were set up. We have a a place in the lobby with a. Plexiglass partition, but we're also encouraging using what Mother Nature has given us right now and work outside, having conversations with folks, but I've also. Uh recommended to our staff that they're outside, but um we would prefer that our employees wear face masks when it comes to this. Public conversation um and utilizing the pieces that we have within our lobby. I'm not a proponent, though, of putting people back into those smaller offices uh just because they're pretty pretty tight. So at this point, I think we can use technology. We can limit the amount of walk-in traffic. We can utilize face masks um and hope that this works because we're doing. The best we can at this point and next week it could all change, so.
Basically use the CDC guidelines.
And rely a lot on um HR and all the other department heads and elected officials to try to come up with the best plan to keep employees safe, keep the public safe.
Thank you, Barry. We have Janet. Treasurer.
Good morning, Janet Saylor, Treasurer. Um everything that Barry said is true. Um I agree with him. If somebody's gonna come into my office to have a a meeting with myself or Annette, I think we can require them to to wear a face mask. We. We don't let that many people come back inside. My major concern is how are we going to control the line? If you've looked outside, you know people are lined up, you know, there's four and five of them in one group to come to the window. How many people are we actually going to let into into this building to stand in that line? Because you are gonna have people. As soon as you say this place is open, you think it's bad now, there are gonna be people all the way down the stair steps trying to get their stuff done. So we need to figure out a way that we're going to control. What we've decided is only two people are coming up to a window at a time. Not four and five, not six of them that all need to stand around to get a renewal or transfer one title. Two people. We would we would prefer one. And one sat back on the bench, but that's not even working while they come in into the building because everybody's got an excuse. One has the checkbook, both of them have to sign, one has to sign the back of the title. My concern is all these people standing in line because they are not going to be social distancing. They're not gonna stay away from each other.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
I'm totally with Janet on that. I did see a group of six people the last time that I was here, all walking through the door together. There's no reason for six people to be standing at your window. So her limiting to two people at the window at a time, I think is completely appropriate. Now, you 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 come to the county court or down here to do your 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 business and you bring four of your friends with you, it just doesn't make any sense, so.
And we would like to limit it to just one at the window because of the social distancing. Because right now we have four people working the windows. When we open, we're gonna have nine windows open and everybody's gonna be on top of everybody.
Okay, so bottom line, guys, we're talking about masks. We're not worried about the the temperature. We've already learned from chief deputy that if we're taking temperatures, it's probably not gonna be that accurate. So um do we have an do we have a solution for masks? Do we want them to be optional per department?
Madam Chair.
Um do we have a motion?
I'd like to speak on it first.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion and I want would like the floor afterwards. Um I'd make the motion to direct. Uh department heads to uh come up with uh recommend their own. Requirements for employees and publics on face coverings and. Then present to the the commission. I think that that's my motion.
Anybody have a second on that one?
Second.
Okay, now, the reason why I I made this motion is quite frankly is every department's a little bit different. And we're trying to to put a blanket policy on everybody when each one has a little bit different functions and less interactions. I think the department heads know what they need to do, what's safe for their employees. They're there every day and I think if. They get that feeling and present it to us that way, at least when when the public calls us and says why they're doing it, we can explain to them. These this department has more one-on-one, more higher-risk clientele than others or whatever. This is what we're doing for each one. It I don't think it's that far off from uh what we've already been discussing, you know, I I don't believe in the temperatures. I think we're talking about the face masks. And I think you guys know your employees and your departments.
Okay, so just one question. When you're doing the screening up front, they're gonna have a list of who's have to wear the face mask in and who doesn't? The deputy's gonna check or who's gonna be checking to see if Cindy uh says face mask and um Dustin says no face mask?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross.
Maybe uh getting back to Lloyd's motion, that would only be applicable when there's one-on-one.
Yeah, exactly.
And no other time. Just when one person has to work with another person, that 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 employee can say, look, if I'm gonna do this, I'll wear a mask. that, that, that employee can say, look, and I'm gonna do this, I'll wear a mask, and you wear a mask.
So when do they find out at, when they're coming through the screening, they can't come in because they don't have a face mask, because it's one-on-one? Or when do they find out, um, that they have to have that face mask? If they're going one-on-one with Audra, if they're going one-on-one with State's Attorney, or if they're going one-on-one with somebody else?
That, during that screening process, Deb, you, you're, you're absolutely, I see where you're going. But you're right, when they come in that one-point entry, if they're going to the State's Attorney's Office, they're gonna ask where you're going. State's Attorney's, they require masks. I, I mean, that's the whole point of, you know.
Chief, Chief Deputy.
Uh, Madam Chair, I, I think a solution might be each window's gonna have to have that conversation with the people when they get there versus trying to handle that at front security.
Yeah, yeah.
And then if, 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 uh, Mr. Vargo has somebody at his window that can handle business at the window that doesn't want to wear a mask, and he wants to allow that, he can decide that. If he wants to have them come back and ask them to wear a mask, they can choose if they want to put a mask on to come back to receive those services or not.
Good point.
That way, we don't have to try to deal with that at the front checkpoint. There's gonna be a lot going on. And then the other request that I would have is, if we're gonna, if we're gonna monitor and make decisions on how many people can be in and out of the building, I think it'd be good if we could work with the department heads again to have a second person like we did initially, so our security could work in conjunction with, uh, either a rotating other department head member to monitor that, so our security staff's not having to try to monitor how many people are in each line, plus handle the screening criteria at the door.
And the bottom line, too, is if you're going to have face masks required, you're gonna need to have face masks available, guys, that want face masks on their people. So those are gonna have to, if they're gonna be required, a lot of people aren't probably gonna have one.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
Just got a, a question, Commissioner LaCroy. Is your intent to have the departments just notify us of what they're doing? Or are you suggesting that we approve or disapprove of their recommendations?
My intent is that every department knows what's best for their department.
So it's not for, for us to approve, it's just for us for notification?
For notification to us what each department's going to in, in act. And, uh, part of that motion, I, I don't know if I added that in there, it, and I don't know if I wanna cloud it. But I think that it's a good point, if you know, if you don't have a six-foot distance or no barrier, uh, I, I'm not even gonna cloud it. I think the department heads know what's best for their departments.
Holly or John, do you have any, um, issues with what's going on with this motion?
I'm only asking these two because they run our department head meetings.
I do agree and believe that it's gonna get a little bit muddy when we're conveying to the public what's expected. Um, I'm also concerned with the employee aspect of, well, how come one department's requiring it and ours isn't? Um, that kind of puts employees against department heads that may not agree with the position that they're taking. I, if that's something that the board is interested in, you know, we can certainly update it on the COVID website. We can put some signage out, but I do agree that it should not be the deputy's responsibility to manage that. It would be up to each department when they're and, and frankly, we're gonna go away from the appointment system. So we're gonna have to figure out another means of communication with the public on what would be required in this department and what isn't in another department. So I see it getting a little messy. I, I see a lot more discussions that we're gonna need to have this week, frankly, um, with Buildings and Grounds with Janet, Treasurer's Office, and what we're gonna do with people, with how we're gonna manage the lines. Um, I, I believe you guys are supportive of staff in making those administrative decisions that we need to make on a daily basis, because frankly, we're adjusting how we do business every day around here.
The main thing, Holly, is that we're informed about the changes that Janet's making or any other department. Um, I always believe the departments know best, but I just also believe that there's gotta be a consensus to a certain extent, so the public has that understanding about what's happening in the Pennington County building.
Correct.
So I, just to leave it up to the departments in, in one sense is good, and then I see a confusion from the public on some of it. So I don't know what that balance would be or that solution would be to help out the public as well, but.
And our message through the news releases and through social media can be that, you know, masks may be required depending on department. Please be prepared, or frankly, we have a supply of masks at the desk, and if it's one of those departments, they're required to wear one.
John?
If I could, Madam Chair. Um, I personally, again, am one of those that falls in the camp that I'm not concerned about COVID. I am, however, concerned about the mental health, the psychological aspect of this whole impact on our employee base. What I would recommend, actually, it kind of takes what Holly just mentioned and, and puts a little bit different spin on it. I would recommend for the time being that when we do open, we require anybody coming in to do business with the county to wear a mask. I would also suggest that we have some on hand in the departments or at the door. If they come to the facility and don't have one, that we're able to provide those. But I, I think it's twofold. It will actually provide a certain level of protection for our employees from a physical aspect, but also it's us making sure that we're protecting them from anyone that's coming in. Um, so personally, again, I, I think there's an advantage to making a statement right now. If you do business with the county, you're required to wear a mask when you come to their facilities. And that could change in a month's time or whatever, as we see the data updated, uh, as we go through the summer. Uh, I fully anticipate that that would fade out of necessity, uh, in the very near future. But, uh, at least for the time being, I would recommend that be the, the guidance.
Jay?
Not, not to drag it out, but hey, John makes some good points, Holly makes some points. What I, what I'm hearing today is that the departments and offices in this building know best about what their employees want and what they feel most comfortable in their setting, given the barriers they have, given the, the nature of the contact they have to have with people from the public, uh, knowing about their own personnel, those who are immune-compromised and so forth. So leaving some discretion to the department heads, I think, is the best decision you can make. Now, could you make a decision of just telling, like John just said, the public, everybody's gotta come in? That's fine with our office, because we're, we're going to require it. That's, that's the way it is right now. So you could do that across the board, and, and that's fine. I think that's probably, that'd probably be good policy. Um, as far as the public being confused, I guess I'd look at it this way. Obviously, I'm standing here wearing a mask. I have a mask in every car. I have a mask in most of my coat pockets and my, uh, book that I carry. So wherever I go in town, if they're gonna require it, I've already got it. It, it's just kind of my common sense approach to if you, I'm gonna wear it regardless, but if you required it, I already have it on me. So the public, we can put it on our Facebook. We can put it on the account, the different, uh, department websites, your website. And then fi- so the public can see all of that. They're gonna know, and they should be expected to have a face mask. If they go to a restaurant or anyplace else that might require it, you gotta have it. And that's up to them to know that, or to call ahead. So I, I'm not concerned about the public being confused, because that's on the public. I'm part of that public, and I'm responsible enough to have one, and wear it when I, when I feel I have to, you know? So I don't, I don't think notice to the public is, is a difficult thing here. And then finally, as one of the commissioners mentioned, if somebody doesn't call ahead and don't have a mask and they show up at the window, um, at the State's Attorney's Office, they're gonna be asked, what are you here for? I'm just dropping off some paperwork. Well, they don't have to have a mask to do that. But if they're here to meet with one of the attorneys, or they're here for, uh, whatever it might be, where you're gonna have to have that face-to-face contact, it's unfortunate that they didn't check, they didn't read the multiple notices that's available to them, or that they just carry one. They're out in public. And if they have to go back to their car or leave and make a new appointment, that's fine, that's a responsibility. It's called common sense. So I would just like to put that out there, that I don't think the confusion factor is an issue, uh, that we need to be concerned with, because we're gonna get that message out there.
Okay, any other discussion on masks? We do have a motion on the floor?
Yep.
Yep.
And, and just, and just so you know, one clarification. We do have Plexiglas, but you can't hear through the Plexiglas, so people get down and talk through the hole to the, to the, uh, staff. So if we make them wear a mask, the public, that's gonna be more protection for the staff also.
You also won't be able to hear them as well.
Yeah, but we can't hear them.
With a mask. So if you can't hear them now, and they have a mask on Janet, they're probably, you're not gonna be able to hear them for sure, but. Okay.
Can we reread the motion, please?
Can you, uh, reread the motion?
Um, to, to direct department heads to come up with their, their own requirements for their offices on requiring face masks and to let you guys know what they've decided.
Okay, um, with this motion, I'm okay with us doing that, but I'd like to see them and come back and vote on it than just have it out there that that's what they're doing, to make sure that we're all on the same page with it, so.
Madam Chair.
We don't have time for that between now and Monday, so you need clear direction today.
To just say that we're letting them do what they want, and then if be, if it becomes an issue, then we have to come back later and then vote, um, how that's working? Is that what's gonna happen?
If, if that's the intent.
Okay, Commissioner Drews or Commissioner Ross.
We might wanna amend that to a point where this is to be reviewed on a monthly basis, because obviously, it's gonna change month to month.
Review it on a monthly basis?
Or, well, I'm just saying that we don't, we, we should have some kind of a timing in this, because it's, it is gonna change. It's something that's evolving, so, uh, maybe in a month, we can, uh, modify it to, to fit the, uh.
Yeah, it might change in two weeks, so I don't know if we have to put a modifier on it.
Well, it'd have to be modified at the department level, as this is presented, because we're not taking action approving or disapproving of what they're doing. All they're doing is notifying us of what their, what their intent is, what they're doing.
Okay.
This may be superfluous, given what Commissioner Drews just said. But I'm perfectly comfortable. We'll have a policy to you. If we change it, we'll get back to you. So I don't think there needs to be a particular month, or that it'll last till a certain date, as we change it with changing conditions and public opinion and whatnot, we'll let you know.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
We do have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Um, I don't know if I oppose. I'm on the fence, so I'm gonna say aye today, but I wanna see how it works. Motion carries.
So are you, uh, yes or no?
I'm, I'm a yes today.
Okay.
I'm kinda on the fence with it, but, okay. Um, anything else that we need to vote on, John? That I've missed today on that, okay? We did, uh, bring that off the table, so we do have the motions. Now we're on, uh, how about a five-minute break, John, and then we'll bring you forward.
Move for five-minute break?
Go move.
Moved by Drews, second by DeSanto. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. There it is, okay. Do we have to come out of motion for that? No. Okay, move to go on into Board of Adjustment, please. Um, we have HR, the human resources. Oh, did I miss him?
Yep.
Holy, you're done, John. You spoke enough today. Oh, sorry. I even said that before we went, okay. You're good, John. Eighteen A, John, please. Sorry about that, John.
Good morning again, Commissioners. John Morale, Pennington County Human Resources. So we've got a number of items on the agenda here today, uh, for consideration. The first three, uh, eighteen A includes, uh, either new job position titles and/or, uh, DBM ratings, so decision band rating, um, changes, uh, for, uh, some positions within three departments. Again, the first one on the list is equalization, uh, and if, if it's okay with, uh, uh, with the commission, I'll kind of hit these all together. The second memo re- is with regard to the, uh, nine-one-one, our dispatch center. We have a number of positions, uh, either new titles and/or ratings changes. And the third one actually is for our Treasurer's Office again. Uh, so we've made some changes again, on the, and the structures within these departments that helped, um, find a balance within the, the new Gallagher survey data, as well as the intent of being able to bring people in at a satisfactory wage level and allow them to still have a career ladder once they're in.
So John, did the pay on those, when you changed the, um, basically, the titles, did the pay change much on those?
It, it changes them, um, actually, I don't know that I brought that page with me.
Substantially or not substantially?
Not, not significantly like you might expect. So it basically brings the entry-level rates for those positions within those departments up to a level that's comparable to what we currently have under the Condry rating system. Um, so no big changes with regard to that, but it eliminates, like, say, for example, within the equalization department, we currently have Appraiser one, two, and three. They're identical responsibilities. The only thing different is the time and position. We're actually changing that to a Staff Appraiser and a Senior Appraiser that recognizes those people. So basically, the Appraiser one and two were combined into the Staff Appraiser position. It allows us, us to bring people in at a higher pay rate, which was comparable to what we had under the Appraiser two. So it's, it's satisfactory from a recruiting perspective. I'm content with that from my ability to bring people in that want to work in that position. And then also recognizing the level of expertise they have to have once they're in the department. Shannon has done an amazing job rewriting those job descriptions within his department. So now we have a Senior Appraiser, uh, position that requires them to be able to do more, um, complex transactions, if you will, within the department.
And did we work with the Sheriff's Office to comply with some of this stuff?
We did that actually about a month or a month and a half ago.
Awesome job.
Yeah, so there's, those were done as well. We've gone through, uh, and the Sheriff and his team, again, put a ton of work into rewriting and redoing those jobs. Uh, the departments have really, uh, really been a joy to work with. Um, you'll see with the dispatch center as well, uh, you had heard at a meeting here a few weeks ago that there was some concerns with that, and I worked again with Mr. Cardley in the dispatch center, and he's rewritten the job descriptions within his department. And again, we've found, uh, positions, uh, and a, a series of positions that allows us to recruit successfully and again, have that internal career ladder. And then the same within the Treasurer's Department. We actually, right now, have, um, Appraiser, or, excuse me, the Taxant Title Assistant one, two, and three. We're going to a Taxant Title Assistant to a Taxant Title Specialist, again, allowing us to find qualified candidates to come in at a slightly higher pay rate level, uh, so we can, again, satisfy the needs of the department and make sure that they're paid fairly.
And those raises are, um, a lot of times, John, if you're gonna do the changes, put from where they went to, like, the Condry to.
On here, gotcha. Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews first.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to adopt the new position titles and DBM ratings for equalization nine-eleven and Treasurer.
Second.
Moved by Drews, second by LaCroy. Commissioner, uh, Ross, connect, please.
John, then, uh, just for an example, the Staff Appraiser, the three new positions, uh, the D, uh, DBM ratings. So then, in the last few months, since we decided to go to Gallagher, then there's been a job description for each one of those.
Yes.
And as you get higher up in the B level, then it's a little more complex.
It's, it's been really enjoyable from an HR geek perspective. Um, the job descriptions have all been updated within these departments. They, they make sense. They fit what we need within the department, and they're also future-looking. So it's not, what do we need today, but how do we make that department functional and effective moving forward, so.
Thank you.
So do we have all the departments updated on job titles now?
Not quite. So we're wrapping up IT and the Highway Department. Um, we also have Buildings and Grounds. Uh, so I have the job descriptions from IT and the Highway Department. We've been actually working on those uh, quite a bit over the course of the last month or two. Uh, we're still trying to find resolution where we have a structure that works for their departments, as well as a satisfactory wage level.
Totally lowered the pay on the Highway Superintendent.
Superintendent, we dropped by four grades.
Assistant?
No. No, I'm teasing. Yeah, no, no. Uh, but we still have a few departments that we're trying to finalize.
Thank you. We do have a motion on Drews, second by LaCroy. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Item B, please.
Thank you, Commissioners. The second item here, item B, is a request to change the, the Fair Labor Standards Act status from exempt to non-exempt for our Highway Foreman. This actually will be done in January with regard to implementing the Gallagher study. Um, they don't see it as an exempt position, and after further review. They don't see it as an exempt position, and after further review, it actually makes sense to move it to a non-exempt position. First of all, again, it's going that way in January anyway. But as we took a look at it, it actually is significant, the, the wage changes with regard to an individual in those positions. It's very difficult to recruit anyone internally to move from a Highway Maintenance Worker to a Highway Foreman. Not only do they have to work a lot of extra hours, but once you move to that exempt status, then they don't feel they're being compensated fairly for that. You'll notice attached to my memo is a memo from Highway Superintendent Miller that actually spells out the potential cost for this year. So with the three foremen that we've got, or excuse me, four foremen that we have, it's about eighty-four hundred dollars, I believe. I don't, yeah, eighty-four hundred dollars for the remaining of the year. So that's for about five months. That's the additional wage expense that we'll have. So to look at it that way as an expense, so I understand, that's money that should be going in the pockets of our foreman and I think would also allow us to have greater success in recruiting for that position.
There a motion or discussion? Motion by Drews, second by LaCroy. No discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, John, for working with all the departments. One more?
It's been fun.
Item C, sir?
So this last one actually is information that we've been presenting since February. When Mr. Goldberg was here from the Gallagher Corporation or Gallagher Benefit Services, he presented this, and we presented it to the department heads in late February, I believe it was. And we've presented it a few times to the groups as well, including the board members, since that time. The data in the memo is correct. What I wanted to point out, however, in the attachment that was supposed to be a presentation-type format, there is an error that Cindy caught for me yesterday, our auditor. On the demotions piece, it's, there's a piece that's replicated. So you'll see two bullet points under the demotion piece. The second bullet point is already included as part of the body of the first bullet point. That just needs to be struck from that. Again, the memo's correct. The presentation piece is not correct. But what I would like to do is take each of these pieces individually and answer whatever questions you may have about those. The reason this is important is that this actually has material impact, or could, if you will, on the budgets for this coming year. This determines, as we look at any increases or costs associated with employees, this gives us the ground rules for what that looks like in the next year and then moving forward after that.
And then you'll be working with department heads on those compensation policies and practices so they are all up to date and know what the changes that you're making beforehand, right?
Yes, ma'am. Again, this has been presented to them beginning in February, so they have those. So it's not a surprise. We also sent them again to them last week before we had the department head meeting. So the information's been out there. We've addressed some questions that have come forward, and actually, I believe Brian has some that he wants to speak about too with regard to one piece of this.
John, tell me what that correction was that Cindy got?
Oh, so on the, in the presentation piece that's attached, not in the memo, because the memo's actually correct, but on the demotions page, you'll see that that second bullet point is also included at the end of the first bullet point on the demotions page.
It's repeated.
I took it out of the, the big presentation the department heads had and tried to put it into a new deck. When I copied it over, that disappeared, and I thought we missed it, so I pasted it again, so it was already there.
Okay, John. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian? Chief Deputy Brian Mueller?
Top of the guy today.
Madam Chair, Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff's Office. Sorry for wearing you out today.
Just kidding.
If I may, after visiting with the, with the Sheriff and Stephanie McCoy from our office, we just wanted a little bit of clarification and to talk a little bit about the Promotions Reclassification section at the bottom of, I think, page one of John's memo. And I, and I won't speak for other departments, but I believe in some of the other departments that reclassification and promotion are synonymous. In our department, we differentiate with our structure quite a bit between a reclassification and a promotion, and we'd like to have the ability and the flexibility for a promotion to be a higher percentage than a reclassification to continue to incentivize staff to take on a position that would have more responsibility and more liability than what a reclassification would be in our office. And, and for an example, also some flexibility on taking into consideration moving from a supervisory non-exempt position to a supervisory exempt position. The way this was currently written, written in our office, and we do several of these, I wouldn't say several, but a few of these a year, were a promotion from a sergeant to a lieutenant position. In a sergeant position, the, the, the salary on the scale does not include overtime that they might work, but most of our sergeants work a decent amount of overtime. But this would not let us take that into consideration. So going just off of how this is written now, a promotion from a sergeant to a lieutenant would actually wind up netting them less money without some flexibility to put them on the proper scale, place on the scale. And then also, if we brought somebody into the office that had twenty years of experience and they might skip a step, say they're promoted from a sergeant to a captain position or a deputy two to a lieutenant position, and they skip a step in there, this would only allow us to promote them at five percent, which would put them a full promotional step grade behind everybody else at that category. So just giving department heads some flexibility in those situations to be able to promote somebody to an adequate level would be important.
Did you talk with John with this already, and, and there wasn't any solution, Brian?
I have not had an, I just let him know that before this that we, we visited about that. I don't have what the specific solution is today, but just as this was written, that, that would cause us some issues going forward, so.
Well, Brian, if we eliminated that, just that one portion, but not in excess of a five percent increase, that doesn't take care of the entire issue you're talking about?
Yes, it would. That would fix that. If we had the flexibility to go above that five percent in those situations, that would fix that.
John?
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Brian. So from a consistency perspective, that could create some challenges for us. What I would suggest instead is that we use the similar process that we do now. Anytime there's an exception that would go out or over and above what the policy actually says, they basically come to the Commission and say, here's what we want to do and why, especially if it's a few changes like that a year. I think that may be a best solution rather than to change the documents as presented.
I agree. And I don't think we've had a problem with any of them either, Brian, so. Board?
I agree.
Okay.
I agree.
I believe that provides us a safety net and we're consistent the way we're doing it with other departments.
Okay.
So we, we do that now. So it's been a, a standard practice, if you will, through the departments if they have something that's outside.
So what we're saying, Brian, is you, you can still do that, but we're notified in that you talked to us when you're making a change. Plus, it's nice to see the changes that you have in your departments when that does come forward and why, so.
So, John, has anybody else expressed any concern on the five percent?
No, sir. No, and I just heard about this this morning. From an auditor perspective, and I, I hesitate to speak on Cindy's behalf, but to have a structured document that specifies exactly what the process is allows them to actually have something to review against. If we would remove that five percent and leave it random, it makes it very challenging, I would imagine, to actually have something to audit against.
But it does say, John, that it has to come to us if it's higher. That's the bottom line in this policy.
Yes, ma'am. There was one change that we would like to have considered as well with regard to the time of service.
Where's that at, John?
I'm trying to, so it's the bottom of the second page of the memo. Right now, it talks about recognizing career benefited employees. We would like to strike benefited and then the full-time benefited and part-time benefited, and just have it say, career employees, beginning the year they reach ten years. That allows any employee that stays on with the county in whatever position or capacity, if they're here for ten years, we want to recognize them. As it's written, it just recognizes benefited employees.
And it sounds more, just sounds nice. I mean, to say career.
So you just removed the word benefited?
Remove the term benefited as well as those things that are in the parentheses, the FTV and the PTV.
Ms. Cindy? You can stay up here, John.
I'll stay over here. You stay over there. Don't fight me. Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. I did speak with John a little bit about some pieces of this, and I think I came to an understanding. But then I also spoke with Steph McCoy over at the Sheriff's Office, and we were discussing the difference between the reclasses and the promotions. And I don't know that it's, that they want this to be more than five percent if they reclass someone. It's that they don't want to go up to that five percent plus one step. Am I correct with that, Brian? So when they're promoting someone to a supervisory position, I think they're fine with the five percent plus one step. But if they're just, what they consider reclassing someone to move them from a deputy one to a deputy two, or they're not moving into a supervisory permission, position, they don't want to go to that five percent because that will have an impact on their budget when they start working with their people on their progression in their career.
So do they have the, it says, but not in excess of five percent. So they, they can do any percentage they want, right?
You can just go up to, and, and that's how everybody's going to.
And that's what it says?
That's what we can audit to. We can just say, okay, if they go up to seven percent, we don't care because it was five percent plus one step. When we audit it.
Okay.
That's, that's the understanding then?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody was on the same page with what we're doing here.
Is that what we're thinking, John?
That will work. Yeah, most definitely. So again, up to five percent. So it, what we have currently allows them anywhere from seven and a half to about fifteen percent, sometimes in excess of that, under the Condry system. This actually brings a structure. Anytime they're moving into a position of greater responsibility or skill, this recognizes them and gives them that fairly consistent increase, but it, it caps the maximum that they might receive.
And anything over does come to us?
Yes.
Okay. So are you okay with that, Ms. Cindy, then?
Um, I'll, I'll think about that a little bit more, but I'm just looking at the wording. You know, it says where their pay increases to the step closest to, but not in excess of five percent plus one step.
So what would you say?
So to where their pay increases, I, I don't know that, that, if you say closest to five percent, that doesn't give you just the two and a half percent or so that I think we're doing now.
Would it be prudent to continue this to the next meeting so they can work some of this out?
Yes. So is there something else that can be said on there, Cindy, or not?
Well, I think we could, I think we could work. I think we could reword that so that when, you know, they're looking at it, they don't, they don't have to go to the closest step, but not over five percent. To where they could just go to where the person gets an increase. So they would just, I mean, if they're on that lower portion of the scale, they're going to get two, two and a half, two and a quarter, two point three, whatever.
I get where you're coming from.
So then, so continue this and then have you, John, and Brian, or the Sheriff, kind of work on that wording. Are you okay with it being continued? Okay. So we'll continue it to the next meeting, which is, Ms. Holly?
The... Yeah, twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
Move to continue to the twenty-first.
Move to continue to the twenty-first by LaCroy and second by Ross Connect. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
That way you guys can kind of iron that out and see bottom line how that works with what Cindy and, and Brian are saying, John. All right, next, we're, a motion to go into Board of Adjustment.
Go move.
Moved by Drews?
Second.
Second by DeSanto. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for the people that came today waiting on us for bringing just a little light on some of our policies today. So we appreciate your, your time that you, you've spent with us today. Ms. Brittany, item A, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Muller, Planning Director. Item A was continued from the previous Board of Commissioner meeting. This is variance review VA nineteen oh five from Michael and Soraya Pellon. This was for a, to allow a vacation home rental on a lot that was less than one acre. I did speak with the applicants. They, and they did submit a email. I believe all of you got forwarded the email, and then there was a hard copy. They did make contact with their surrounding neighbors, and it didn't sound like there was much interest in allowing them to replant, to gain the extra point zero seven acres. The applicants are on the phone and attendance on this meeting, so if you have questions for them. So staff would entertain any other questions on this item or?
Thank you, Brittany. Okay, Commission, we had discussion last time. Do we have more discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect?
Last time I was pretty adamant that anything under an acre, I couldn't accept. I, after reviewing the letter that Michelle and Gabby put together, and they did make an effort to go to their neighbors to try to purchase point oh seven acres to bring that into compliance. And going back to the history of idle waste, which has basically been vacation home rentals, and looking at the merits, I'm going to change my position on that today. But I don't want people to think that in the future I'm going to be so lenient on anything less than an acre relative to vacation home rentals.
Madam Chair.
Ms. LaCroy?
I, I agree with Mr. Ross Connect. I mean, we knew we were going to have some cases like this happen that are just barely under, I think they made a good valiant effort to contact to get that one point three. My fear is, you know, you look at the house and what has been happening in that area, and that's what they are. I think you want to use it as a vacation rental in order to keep it up. I've seen some properties that people bought that just come back once a year. Pretty soon, it's three times, once every three years, every five years. At least with it being used, used, you know, it's going to be better maintained for the surrounding area, is my thoughts on, on that. But I do agree with, you know, Commission decided on one acre, but I think this was happening way before that was put into place. It's just that it wasn't on record. And once they found out that they had to, they, they went and got the requirement, which is a lot of work to get to be a vacation rental. I mean, tax licenses and, and letters getting sent out and so forth, it's not all that easy, so. And it's going to be in the review considering, what's, this is one year, so if there's a, on a complaint basis, also.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Drews?
I'd make a motion that we approve the variance VA nineteen dash oh five with the one condition.
Motion by Drews. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by LaCroy. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries with one move.
Madam Chair, I just had one comment on that. Because there is a conditional use permit associated with this variance, staff would recommend that, that the board make a motion or request that the board make a motion to have that conditional use permit be reviewed and add a condition that upon the sale or transfer of this property, that that conditional use permit end because this is a situational request.
I would make that motion.
Motion made by DeSanto?
Second.
Second by Ross Connect. Folks, you are on the line. Are you understanding that your first motion passed for your vacation home rental, this is your second motion to be to have a conditional use, which most, or I should say, all vacation home rentals have, and then once the vacation home rental basically isn't sold.
Right, if they, if the Pellons are no longer the owners and they sell this property, because right now in our ordinance, there is a transfer provision that there would be a condition in their conditional use permit. So we would bring that in front of the Planning Commission that we add a condition that upon the sale of this property, that, that, that particular conditional use permit end. So any future owners would have to go through this process.
So Pellons, do you understand what just happened or what's going to happen? Are they online? Hello?
They're muted.
You have to unmute yourself?
Yes, I'm sorry.
You're okay.
I do understand that if the property gets sold, that they will have to go through the process again.
Yep, they will have to come back for a conditional use permit.
And a variance.
And a variance.
Okay, and a variance, okay.
So today, the first half has been passed that we're allowing the, for the vacation home rental. The second motion would be for the conditional use permit and the transfer if you guys decided to sell it, sell the property, okay?
Okay, okay, understood.
Thank you, sir. There has been a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Pellon, did you have something, sir?
I think you just said thank you.
No, thank you for your time. No, uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. You have a great day, sir.
You too, thank you.
You're welcome. Item B?
Good morning, Commissioners, Christina Proetti, Counter Planner, County Planner. Uh, item B is variance request twenty dash zero two. Um, the applicant's Thomas and Pamela Troxel. Uh, Mr. Troxel is in the audience today. Um, they are requesting to reduce the side yard setback from twenty-five feet to ten feet, to reduce the front yard setback from twenty-five feet to zero feet, and to also allow an accessory structure to be placed in the front yard. Um, during staff's research and from departmental routing comments, uh, it was discovered that there is an eight-foot utility and drain easement located along the front yard. Staff noted, um, that the proposed structure will encroach into the eight-foot utility and drain easement, um, and that it would need to be vacated prior to this variance being heard. Um, so vacation of easement request twenty dash zero one is actually being heard today as well. I believe it is agenda item number, or letter F. So that'll be heard after this. Um, some criteria for the variance request to be considered. A, that specific circumstances or conditions such as exceptional narrowness, topography, or sighting exist. I did go out to conduct a site visit, and I did verify that there are particular conditions, um, that warrant approval, such as topography, um, their backyard is a hill, and the placement of their on-site wastewater treatment system is on their side yard, so they wouldn't be able to cover that. Um, B, that the variance does not grant a use which is otherwise excluded from that particular district. Uh, the setback variance would not grant a use, uh, which otherwise, which is otherwise excluded from property zoned as low-density residential. C, that due to specific circumstances or existing conditions, strict applications of the zoning ordinance would be an, an unwarranted hardship. Um, strip, strict application of the zoning ordinance would require them to meet the twenty-five foot setbacks, um, in the front yard. Uh, D, that granting of a variance is not contrary to the public interest and is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. Um, one, uh, granting of this setback, uh, does not, it's not in harmony with our general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. Um, and two, I believe that Pennington County Highway was also not in favor. Um, there are no other concerns for this item. If you Commissioners wish to approve it, staff does recommend some conditions be included.
So, um, why didn't the highway department, why weren't they in favor of it?
I don't believe highways really ever in favor of granting.
Plains here.
The highway department's just, no matter what, uh, variance is going to be heard. They just got a standard to operate. Their default is they don't want to mess with setbacks. That's just their position they take, and same position we do on vacation home rentals. Got to be at least one acre, so that's just basically a default, uh, every time we get one of these.
Thank you. Right, do we have a motion?
Well, do you want Tom to come up?
If you like, or if you have a motion?
I've done the site inspection, and I've looked at the topography, and I've looked at the location of the home, the access. I don't see anything adverse, I'd be totally in favor of this.
Move for approval, two conditions.
Move by LaCroy?
Second.
Second by Ross Connect.
Now we want to.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Did you want to speak, Tom?
Sometimes it's better not to.
Thank you, you've been passed, sir. Okay, move to come out of Board of Adjustment.
So moved.
Move by DeSanto, second by Drews, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries.
Good morning, Commissioners, again, Brittany Molitor. Uh, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning consists of following three items. Item C is the second reading of ordinance amendment OA twenty dash zero two, Pennington County, and approval is recommended. Item D is minor plat MPL twenty dash ten for Robert Shivers, and approval is recommended. Item E is minor plat MPL twenty dash eleven for Rushler's Ranch LLC, Davis Engineering as a agent, and approval is recommended.
At this time, is there anybody from the public who wish to remove any items from their planning consent agenda, C, D, and E? If not, is there any Commissioners who would like to, uh, remove any items, C, D, and E? If not, we have a motion by Ross Connect and second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Regular items, item F, vacation of easement, Tom and Pam Troxel. I think we've heard some of that easement. Do we have a motion or sec, or a discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Ross Connect.
Second.
Second by LaCroy. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sister. Item G is a layout plan for David Grover. Brittany, sorry, because we heard the other one that we knew. Wasn't trying to ignore you guys.
Okay, item G is layout plan LPL twenty dash twelve to create lots A, B, and C, and D of Busmar subdivision. The applicant, David Grover, who is in the audience, is requesting to subdivide an existing twelve point eight-three acre lot into four lots. Each lot will be approximately three acres. Uh, as the property exists today, it is low-density residential district wood, which will meet the zoning requirements for the new lots. Um, the lot is vacant of any structures. There is an existing on-site wastewater treatment system on proposed lot C. Um, there was an existing single wide mobile home on that lot that was removed. Um, access is off Old Hill City Road. Old Hill City Road is maintained by Pennington County Highway, and there is no special flood hazard area on the subject property. Uh, this was routed through the interdepartmental review process. Um, there was just a couple of comments from the highway department regarding, regarding approach permit requirements. Um, and staff did not find any major issues with this, and Planning Commission did not either, and they did recommend that the Board of Commissioners approve with nine conditions.
Move for approval.
Move by LaCroy, second by Ross Connect. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Mr. Grover, you want to speak? Item H, please. Thank you for your time today, Mr. Grover and Mr. Troxel that was here.
Item H is a request for formal action of the Board of Commissioners to close section lines per SDCL thirty-one dash eighteen dash three. Uh, the section lines are the north section line of section fourteen lying in the northeast quarter and the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter of section, of township to north, and range seven east, and the north section line of section thirteen lying in the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter of township to north, range seven east. Um, this is for a, an existing pit, uh, for GCC Dakota. Uh, the board has taken a similar action, um, for a mining operation off the service road for Pete Lane and Sons. This is a safety measure to allow them to put up signage, to notify the public that there is an active mining operation in the area, and that the section lines are essentially closed for public travel, foot traffic, and use. And this is also a condition of approval of their mining permit, um, that the Planning Commission approved earlier this year.
Question or motion?
Move for approval.
Move by LaCroy?
Second.
Second by DeSanto. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brittany. Good job today, Brittany. And this morning, thank you for that information. And Ms. Michelle? Items from chair and commission members and committee reports? Ms. Holly, do we have anything? When is the, uh, when do we go for Sioux Falls?
September fourteenth and fifteenth.
Okay, and how many of you guys are going?
All of us.
Okay. And Holly, are you going?
That's up to the board's directive.
Okay, and how much does it cost? Holly, for you?
South would be about seven hundred.
Okay.
For registration room, gas, per diem.
We do or don't have that in the budget for you?
Yeah, we took it out as part of the travel costs when we cut the ten percent.
Okay, I will defer my trip there because I'm no longer going to be a Commissioner as of January first. And, oh, so that Holly can go.
Okay. Holly, did you have DeSanto's in your budget?
We took it all out.
Um, all out. No. Oh. Well, I didn't do much good though, did I?
Tried.
Madam Chair. I. Through some email, I, I will cover my own costs. I won't cover the administrat, or the fees for, for, uh, registration or anything like that, but as far as motel and, uh, per diems, I'll cover my own.
I will too. Me as well. I mean, that was always the plan.
Yep.
So do we have LaCroy's? Do we have the money that, for the registration for all of them, or not, Holly? I think you took it all out.
I'd have to, I, I mean, no, we, we took everything out, but we can move some stuff around.
Okay.
So.
So does anybody oppose that we put either from contingency or something in for, so Holly could go?
I think we should.
She goes to all of them. It's not like she just go into this one.
That's fine.
Okay, so next meeting, Holly, let's put that on the agendas for you and any other costs that I was going to add. Um, I won't be going this year, so. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Holly, just something that I forgot about, and, uh, I heard someone talking about the trip there. So make sure we got you covered, all right? Anything other for committee reports, commission members? Um, there was some talk about putting the committee reports on the agenda so people knew what committees were being, um, that we were having them, and that if that person wasn't going to be there, then, um, we've actually called the chair of that committee and asked basically what was discussed, so we always have information on those committees. Um, Holly, you have any thoughts on that?
Uh, no, we can absolutely list the committee reports that, or the committee meetings that were had and list which Commissioner is the liaison. Um, to kind of give you a reminder of, of what meetings to report on, if that would be helpful for the board.
That would be helpful for me.
I don't always get notice of what meetings you guys are at, so, um, we maybe just leave a any and all other meetings to report on.
Yeah, and then some of the stuff, Holly, that we go to, that we should be reporting more on, that would be nice too, um, under the chair or the vice chair, so they are reminded to bring those reports as well. Because we go to so many sometimes, um, that, I mean, I have a book on it, and some of them and others is just, you know, what you guys already find out the next. Well, you know the next meeting, so most of the time.
Because you think it was, you already talked about it at the previous meeting.
Yeah. So that, that would be good, Ms. Holly, if that's okay with everybody? All right.
We'll do that.
Commissioner DeSanto?
Uh, I had no committee meetings last week. My, and my fair board meeting was moved to this evening, so I'll report on my fair board meeting at the next meeting.
Mr. Ross Connect?
Uh, I'd like to say that I had something, that the last, uh, commission meeting took so long that by the time I got home, the, uh, building committee was over. See what, see if I can't do better today.
We had meetings, but again, like South Valley and the other ones, we have had on the agenda, and they're always brought forward. So some of those meetings are, a lot of those meetings that me and Gary go to, um, they're just brought forward to hear, so we don't really have to report because you already, you've already seen them, so I don't have any. Question, Drews?
Well, I'll report on the building committee since Ron was absent. Uh, most of the discussion, I think, really took, uh, place relative to the, our lacrosse facility. And as we all know, that's, uh, being stood up right now to, uh, move the homeless, uh, COVID cases over to that facility for the time being. And so, uh, we're still moving forward with the, uh, anticipation of getting that building surplus and on the market. So, and the other discussion involved the completion of the jail remodel. That's pretty well complete. Uh, and as we all heard at the, uh, at our last commission meeting, uh, they're trying to work out, uh, the issues relative to some apparently past sewer issues with that, uh, original structure of that building.
Have them check the water in the sewer, Commissioner Drews, just in case for infrastructure for that building.
Okay.
There might be two issues there. Commissioner LaCroy?
I attended, um, air quality board meeting by Zoom, nothing really to report. Uh, community health by Zoom. And community health was focused on, uh, an assessment of the director's performance pretty much and budgets. Um, community health has seen downturn of, of clients during the COVID, uh, experience, so they're working through that, seeing what it was. You know, I think a lot of people are afraid to go for normal checkups, as oddly as that may seem, but I mean, it, it is affecting them in that routes and so. Uh, but they've had an uptick in, in, uh, dental, so, or, not dental, medication, the medication that they give out is really doing good for their community. I mean, making affordable medication to the community. So that was one of the hot topics of it. And we've already had the discussion of the South Valley, so we're up to date on that. Um, otherwise, I might have lost like that, because like you said, sometimes two weeks.
Can't remember.
Well. Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto?
I did have one more thing I'd like to report on, um, that we, that I attended, the, um, as many of us did, the Mount Rushmore fireworks display. And I'd just like to give a shout out to the Sheriff's Department for handling the protests in a efficient and effective manner. Um, they were running their tails off up there. The security and the Sheriff's Department and the Highway Patrol and.
Like three hours.
The Secret Service.
Yep.
Under extreme tense conditions, under extreme hot weather. And, uh, I ran into Willie multiple times, and he kept me updated on what was going on. And, uh, again, they just did a fantastic job at, uh, keeping things under control and addressing the issues as they came about to give everyone that attended, uh, probably, and one of the best experiences they've had in a long, long time. So, uh, thank you, Sheriff's Department.
I totally agree.
I agree. Good point. That was the most amazing event I've ever seen.
It was incredible.
Between the flyovers and having a president there, and just how they handled the traffic, and everything just kind of flowed. And then when the protesters came, how the sheriff and everybody were prepared with tow trucks and everything. It was just a well-prepared, it's, you know, event that it was just exciting to watch. And how much work did that take, is all I got to say. Everybody, the first responders and everybody that made that event possible, um, thank you, because it was the most amazing, amazing way it was run and how it worked. And just watching it, it was, it was pretty.
And then, obviously, we should give thanks. The good Lord came in and, uh, gave us a good fire extinguisher. If there was anything out there that was still, uh, hot, it wasn't after that.
It's funny you said that, because I was like, God works in mysterious ways. So Gary, I said, five minutes after we start driving, it starts raining. I said, there you go. And then what was really weird is there was dragonflies all over, big huge dragonflies. Did you see them?
Yeah.
I've never seen that many dragonflies in one spot.
I thought maybe that, maybe they all saw that, uh, what was that, that craft called that the president flew in on and thought that was their mothership? Because it looked just like them, so.
I think they were security cameras.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were pretty good.
Well, yeah, no kidding.
No, that was pretty cool. But if they brought good luck, they sure did, because everything went amazing, so.
Sure did, yeah.
Next is approval of the vouchers.
So moved.
Move by Drews?
Second.
Second by LaCroy, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries, items from public. Looks like you, John. Come on, you don't want to talk about some more COVID today, sir. John, thank you for all you do for us in HR. You've been working very hard on this Gallagher and all these policies and procedures. Um, did you ever get your person on line by chance? The other person that you were? Not yet? No update on that? I know it's public, but.
The requisition closed.
So the requisition closed on Sunday night. Um, so we reviewed the final applicants yesterday and got notices out to the ones that we've invited to participate in the interviews, so.
Nice, I know you need some help, John.
Like seventy applicants, so it was really, really nice to see.
You've had, you've had a lot of paperwork this year, John, a lot of issues with COVID and just trying to get things for Gallagher study, that really, um, been working hard, thank you, John. Next is executive session, do we have a motion to go in executive session?
Go move.
Personnel issue SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two dash one. Motion by DeSanto, second by Drews, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. He's so funny. Okay, John, a motion to come out of executive session. Moved by Drews.
Okay.
Second by La Croix, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Good afternoon, commissioners, I have three motions that I'd suggest we make. Um, the first one has to do with a highway department employee, Ronald Stagner. Uh, we'd like to move him, and this would be effective January twelfth, so beginning of this next pay period, move him to grade sixteen, step ten for an hourly rate of twenty-five thirteen.
I'd make that motion for July twelfth.
Moved by Drews, second by La Croix, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Okay, second motion I'd request is to uh place equalization director Shannon Rittberger at grade twenty-four, step thirteen for a biweekly pay rate of thirty-five forty-four and eighty cents, effective with the pay period July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty.
So moved. Moved by La Croix.
Second.
Second by DeSanto. I thought we were getting him, him a pay decrease.
A decrease, right.
Okay, for not. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed.
And the third motion, if I could, commissioners. Place uh planning director Brittany Molitor, grade twenty-four, step five for a biweekly rate of thirty-two oh eight eighty, effective with the pay period beginning August ninth, twenty twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Drews, second by La Croix, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners.
Motion to adjourn? Thank you.
So moved.
Moved by DeSanto.
Second.